Good evening, I call to order this meeting of the West Jordan City Council Committee of the Whole. This evening is Wednesday, November eighth, twenty twenty-three. All members of council are present with with exception to council member Jacob, who's anticipated to be joining us a little bit later today. We have members of the council office join joining us. We have Mayor Burton, various members of his staff. Also want to note that uh Corbin Lee is joining us, our C A O is online as well. And with that, we'll jump into our agenda council member pack. I see your lights on.
Oh, thank you Chair. Um I've noted that there's approximately ten or twelve people that are either outside or in chambers who were under the impression that there was a public comment portion on the agenda and normally it would land on this week. It's just November and December. We changed the ordered meetings and I noticed it's not on the agenda, but if amenable, I'd like to make a motion to allow for public comment tonight, uh if they came in anticipation of speaking so that we don't turn them away.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. Thank you.
Alright, motion by council member pack to open citizen comment. I'll offer a second to that. Uh any discussion to the motion? Okay, all in favor?
I.
Any opposed? All right, we have council member White Lock. I didn't quite catch a a response on that one.
We didn't have discussion of the motion. I should have turned my light on. I yeah. I don't see all these people in council ready to speak. The people that were here, we already talked to them and told them that that our business meeting is next week when they can speak. The item is not something we're going to be addressing for several weeks, so I don't, I, yeah, I'm a no.
Alright.
I'll be a no.
Motion fails uh three to two. We do have a couple of vote. Motion failed because we didn't have four.
But that's a procedural mode. That's a procedural motion. You don't have to afford it to do that, right Alan? Or these waiting rules require a super majority. Let's let's get that one right, just so we know.
If if I saw all these people sitting in here, I'd be amenable to it, but I doubt the students from West Jordan are gonna be rushing up and the other folks, maybe one person, are you here for that? Yeah. So I don't see anyone in here for that item, so.
The folks who have joined us online, if you're anticipating speaking during citizen comment, could you please hit the little button at the bottom of the screen to raise hand? There's a number of names that don't look familiar, so I want to make sure that you and I will look there. Meantime, we'll wait for Mister Anderson. Alright, and council member, council member Jacob has joined us.
Good, now that you've got six here, if you wanna.
We'd have, we'd have motion, we had a second, we had a vote. Uh it'd be nice to get clarification on that rather than discount the vote and.
Should just be a motion to amend the rules, Alan. Or a motion to suspend the rules.
Yeah, it it's active consulting with legal, it uh would be a procedural motion, so it just needs some majority.
Alright, so with that then, that would mean that that motion passes, so. Uh again, if you, so with that being said, we'll move to citizen comment. If you are online and would like to speak, please hit the on icon to indicate you'd like to speak. If you're here in council, well, if you're here with us in person and would like to address the council during citizen comment, now would be your time to do so. You're welcome to come up to the microphone and you can have up to three minutes to speak.
There's a pretty large contingent outside the door too that might be wanting to do that too, so something might wanna tap him on the shoulder.
Yes, in the meantime, we'll start here. If you could, please uh introduce yourself and your city of residence, uh but uh council member Harrison, please, you can have that three minutes.
Hello, my name is Suzanne Harrison. I actually serve on the Salt Lake County Council and I was in the neighborhood because the library was hoping hosting an open house for the Bingham Creek Trail in the future of it. So when I heard that you were here, I thought I'd just come introduce myself. I'm new to the council, but I represent countywide. And it's really important to me to introduce myself to you and know that from my perspective, we're serving side by side, so please let me know how I can help serve our shared residents constituents and the work that you do is so important and I really appreciate it and just wanted to say hello. And if there's anything I can do, my email's suharrison at slco dot org and call or reach out anytime. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, anybody else who'd like to speak during citizen comments tonight? Alright, seen none. Now we will move back to the agenda. First item that we've got is an update on the station area plans and ever reportedly that one is Taylor Jensen, Mister Jensen.
Great, thank you Chair and Council. Um been a few months since I've talked to you about the stationary plans, so I wanted to come and give you an update on where we're at and hopefully any questions you may have. Um so these are just a list of our stationary plans. Uh here where we have seven in the city. Um we're currently working on stationary plans for four of the seven of state statute requires. We have at least four adopted by the end of twenty twenty-five. We're looking to probably have those come for adoption early uh next year. Um we were originally planning for next month, but with some timing and um stuff, we decided to push that back a little bit to make sure we were fully prepared. Uh so I mentioned we're working on four stationary plans. Uh these are two different plans. We have a combined plan with us in Midville, which is looking at city center, historic Gardner and Bingham Junction Station, which is in um Midville. And then we're also looking at the fifty-six hundred West Old Bingham Highway Station. Um and maybe a little confusing why we're looking at that one on the other side of the city, but actually there's a lot of interplay between these four stations. And what's happening in fifty-six hundred West will allow um the plans for the other three to actually come to fruition, hopefully. Uh so this is like I mentioned, it's been uh something we've been working on this whole year. Our kickoff meeting was on January seventeenth and you can see we had a number of public engagement meetings with members of uh councils both here and Midville. Um different property owners, uh businesses, school district. Um we've had two surveys be open and we've had some open houses, so it's been an ongoing conversation and we look for that um public engagement to continue all the way through January and hopefully adoption and by January, early February of next year. So looking at the station areas, we have four distinct stations with four distinct character areas, and this is really important. Um because our our strategy is not to provide everything on one station, but to have a system-wide approach where the four stations and eventually all seven stations together will provide everything that the state is asking for uh on the system, but maybe not necessarily in one station because that doesn't always make sense. So the BM Junction Station in Midville, that's a corporate center um characterized by a lot of offices. Uh historic gardener, it's a gateway to our city, probably the most historic portion of our city. Um Jordan River Parkway is a great amenity there. And this area is kind of in flux. It hasn't always been uh utilized as jewel, which it could be, but that could be changing. Sorry. Uh city center, uh as we know and love it, it's got a lot of industrial uses, large benches of pavement and uh I think we all agree is underutilized and could be used better, so that's hopefully something that we can accomplish in these plans. And then fifty-six hundred West is a very heavy industrial uh station, um industrial corridors, uh utility corridors and it's a fairly unpleasant environment, uh built environment for uh humans, but there's a lot of important things that happen there, but just not always something we wanna be dealing with as a human. So mention we're looking at all these station areas as a system. Uh the state wants us to provide housing, retail, shopping, uh more ridership, but that's not gonna happen in every station, but if the stations all work uh according to a system approach where they maximize their advantage, we feel like we can do a better job of doing that. That's the approach we've taken. First, West Jordan City Center, this is the most important uh stationary plan. Uh I would argue that we're working on and probably the one with the most potential statewide, not only in West Jordan, but in the whole state system. Uh we we like to joke that death tax isn't trying to plan a station around West Jordan City Center. The only three constants in life. The last six or so plans that we've tried to adopt just haven't got over that hump, so this is going to be the one that does. Hopefully. Uh it's covered by large industrial users. Um Jordan School District has a large facility here. Um which that's unfortunate. Some responses because they don't pay any taxes. This could be our highest producing tax portion of the city and it's a non-tax user. And there's large expenses of pavement that just aren't underutilized for how important the station could be. Uh we've looked at it though, by the third of the station is owned by two or three uh property owners, so we can see civic uses. That's the state and the city. So we have the park, the justice center, this building, we have some property across the street. U T A owns a large portion, has this Jordan School District and builder's first supply. And we feel like there's an opportunity for uh the project to have these four real key pieces of the property be the uh the core of the project. And that's what we're focusing our planning efforts on and then um as they develop, that will spill out to the full uh half mile radius is the hope. Historic Gardner is a gateway to our city with Gardner Village. There's also the Old Rock Church is one of the two listed sites we have in the city. It's also the location of our cemetery. On Jordan River with that great walking trail along it. On the Midville side, there's the Jordan Bluff Development. But then some of the items that are maybe not as loved, but also have an important role are the asphalt recycling plant and the water treatment plant. Just for the record, I'm a big fan of the water treatment plant. I'm very glad we have that. Just saying. Uh and being in the dungeon, we'll just touch on that really shortly because well, some of this does profit for our boundaries. Uh there's not a lot uh planning wise for mid uh West Jordan in the stationary plan, but it's fairly well developed already. It's a new station. Um and it largely already complies with the kind of the state mandate. Um the the opportunities that we've been looking at in conjunction with partners in Midfield though is really about tying that into the main street. There's not a a connection there for pedestrians. Um so that's the main uh effort we're working on there. Oh, there we go. Sorry. Okay, so let's look at some of our preferred plans. Um I wanted to start with a historic gardener as this is kind of the gateway to the city. Uh as you'll see, there's a large expanse of green and yellow there, kind of where the asphalt recycling plant is. The idea of this is to kind of remediate this area and have it pay uh pay you pay your back to the story, history of West Jordan. So this is uh looking at like an agricultural-based residential development, so that would be um kind of shared agricultural space, a heritage farm uh types situation with small lot residential around that, uh maybe smaller homes that we're used to seeing. But that's because the shared open space would be the agricultural space there. I'm sorry, getting over a little bit of cold. Um other key aspects of this are improvements to the Jordan River Trail, um some regional park facilities, perhaps uh uh playgrounds or amphitheater, um increasing parking along that for people who want to get out and recreate along that trail. U T A would be looking to redevelop portion of their parking lot into some apartments. I think they're looking at about thirty units there on their existing parking lot and then making some improvements to um the plaza.
Taylor, do you know how, when I think of their parking lot there, I think of this small little thing. How how big is their parking lot? Um maybe we haven't really looked at.
It it's very underglide. It's probably about five acres.
Um is it? Okay.
But there's not a lot of parking that's happening there and they're looking at revisioning that parking lot. It might not serve as many buses as it's currently doing right now.
Which parking lot are we talking about?
I think the one right across from Gardner Village, right?
Yes.
Yeah, by Pioneer Hall.
But you're you're we're talking the U T A one or the?
Yeah.
Right, the U T A one.
Yeah. Thank you.
Uh we will notice that as we get west of thirteen hundred, the density increases in this project that goes to have more of a um kind of a small lot residential development. Um also, we're noting that that portion is also within the city center stationary plan and the main reason we're showing you here is because uh we we want to account for those units in this stationary plan rather than city center so that we can argue to the state that we are providing housing in the station, even though the character area there would be much more focused towards the city center rather than to the agricultural heritage that we would find east of thirteen hundred.
Do we get to claim some credit for the housing that's there next to Gardner Village?
We do.
For this part. Uh and then with this, was there any consideration given to improve connectivity between the track station and the north side of seventy-eight? Or we've got like a hot crossing now, for example, uh like trying to do another tunnel similar to what we have next to the Jordan River that needs to be fixed?
Yeah, so um we will be rebuilding that bridge in the short term uh across the Jordan River. It's already showing its age. There's still cracks underneath of it. We must be careful with work short. Door is under fifty years. Um. So that bridge will need to be replaced eventually. Um and so that would include some improvements to the crossing underneath the bridge, but we also did explore uh maybe some pedestrian islands or some sort of way to uh just better that crossing across uh that busy road because it can be very dangerous even with the hot crossing at this time.
Yeah, the uh the the thought running through my mind is that we're to be reorienting to a little bit. The the trail and the underpass could be brought a little bit further to the west, a little closer to Garden Village, so you have that a little further away from the river and provide better connectivity of Garden Village, but also pull it a little bit uh further away from some of the water problems we've got. But if that's something that UDOT is going to have to be doing, if we could get the UDOT funds go to that to help support the efforts that are going here with U T A as well. Um but I'd just like to see when taxpayer money, no matter what the source it ended up, it could come back together to uh to help us with this.
Sure.
That's my thought. Thanks.
Um and I don't know if I touched on this or not, but this adults would be promote uh promoting some uh improvements to the area next to the Old Rock Church and making that the plaza, uh which just activated seating and stuff and that would uh be an amenity for maybe the people in the um the new apartment building, which U T A would be proposing.
So question. We, when we were talking about the, when we were meet doing the stationary plan meeting back whenever we did it in the old rock church in Pioneer Hall and U T A was there. U T A was very amenable to punching a hole through the fence there, the the east fence of Pioneer Hall. Uh or and we, I'm not even sure who owns that fence, Pioneer uh U T A or uh but they were very amenable at that point in time to just put, you know, put a couple of pu- cut the section out so that people could actually walk between the track station and Pioneer Hall. Um are are we anywhere close to doing that more immediates and not wait till we implement something like this?
Yeah, I think an effort like that would have been pretty short order. Um.
Okay.
The answer is yes, it it will be his department, however.
Right, but but we are looking at doing that, yes. Okay, yeah, cuz I I just think that the sooner that we can do that and and make some connectivity now would help.
It it just makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanna add my voice to that too because it's also a really nice walking path. People go up kind of around the cemetery and see some of what's up there straight from the track station path to go up to the sidewalk and then then back in.
Okay, uh fifty-six hundred West Old Bingham Highway. As mentioned, there's a lot of industrial uses over here. There's the substation. Uh there is an employment center to the west, but there's not really a good way to get there. There's not even sidewalks along the road. There's a very large parking ride there. Um we've done some parking counts though and it is not used hardly at all. We're looking at maybe under forty parking uh there a day. It's it's crazy low, but as we mentioned, the station is important to the overall uh plan that we're doing and that's because we have some uses which can relocate there that that make a lot of sense. Um builder first supply, B F S. They own property here in city center. I'm sorry, can we jump back to fifty-six real quick?
Yeah.
You mentioned parking counts not showing it being heavily utilized. Do you know when those when those counts were taken?
Yeah, I I actually cut them myself about two months ago. I went out there three times a day for two weeks.
Okay, I was gonna say, I know that when there's big things going on downtown, like if there's a jazz game or something, or especially when there's like Christmas lights or something, you you see a fair number of folks that are that are lined in the street out there, but it's part of my concern about that. I mean, I could see it not regularly being fully utilized. But I think some of that goes back to uh it would be a question for U T A on the design because having that so long, so stretched out requires a lot of walking to get to the platform.
Chris, I think you're thinking of the one that's farther east than this one.
Forty-eight, you're probably.
You're thinking of the.
I'm thinking of the forty-eighth one. I'm not thinking fifty-six.
Thank you. I was thinking the same thing and then had your hand, I say that for like.
Hang on, I've driven by this and I've seen cars on the.
Yeah. Only sugar factory use a lot more than this and it was.
But this one is an industrial area and the parking sits back in, so your vehicle's more vulnerable, so I can see why if you're going to use when you drive to forty-eight.
Right. Uh so moving past city center, why we think this is uh helpful and maybe I can touch on this a little bit later, but a B F S builder first supply, they own property in city center and also in Midville. And the lease on their uh location in Midville at Bingham Junction is going to be ending shortly. Under five years. Um it's very nice to relocate that and site here.
Talking about the one right at the railroad tracks and Holden Street, Seventh West?
Yes, okay. So that will be ending shortly and the site here in West Jordan is not large enough to accommodate that. So for them, it makes a lot of sense for economies of scale to combine those and move them somewhere where they can be together. There just happens to be property on a real spur at fifty-six hundred West. It's large enough to accommodate them. They've been open to that and property owners have been as well.
So is, can we go back the slide? Oh, please. So is that this?
So large piece kind of north of the.
Of the blue tru- rectangle that is the water tank? Is that the one that's just?
No.
Part of there? No?
It's, oh, we can't see it. So it's just north of uh Old Bingham Highway. There's that big kind of trapezoid.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was, yeah, okay. With the writing on it, right?
No. Just next to S M E still.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Um this has also been looked at the location for Jordan School District to move both of their fleet and uh warehousing um to this location. Uh the place we'd be looking at, they would actually be on the south side of that large parking lot for U T A. We've met with Jordan School District multiple times about that and they are open to it and actually excited about it. They took it to their board and their board is also on board with that. Um if they could keep their uh administrative staff in the location at this station in the city center, which is something we would wanna do anyways, so um between those two, that opens up all of this land that you're seeing here highlighted on the city center could potentially be under the control of um public entities, which would be a part of this development po- uh possibility here in city center. And so that's why we're looking at city center as the kind of the key aspect of our stationary plan system. Um there's over four thousand dwelling units possible here. You're looking at densities that are over fifty units per acre. That sounds like a lot, but our T O D's actually currently already allow up to seventy-five. Uh now, if we build that high, that's that's questionable, but the fifty is really important number because that allows us to uh utilize some H T R Z taxing funds if we get that density. Uh we are looking at height, so some of the buildings could be upwards of eight stories high. There would be a lot of retail and office components, including office as a first uh phase project. Um and that'd be really important to house that during the school district administration there. We've talked about building them a purpose-built uh space that might be shared uh on other floors with other people, but build uh training facilities and offices for their administration staff that could really service uh their needs there better than they're currently being served. Other key aspects of this are a hotel, pedestrian and restaurant street. And as mentioned, we'd be relocating to partners that are willing to. So what that looks like is this, this is the preferred concept plan. Um a couple of things to note about this is um the stationary plan goes out farther than that, and we would be working on those other areas later, but this would be where we would start our first kind of core, be in this area and we'd work out as this becomes successful. And hopefully is what that would happen is the surrounding um property owners would realize that this is a successful development. They could be successful if they jumped on board in something similar, so let the market kind of pick up after we get the uh ball rolling. Uh and include a parking district, um shared parking. There'd also be uh a lane asked for some of those parking standards or ratios to be allowed to be shared between office and retail in the afternoon, the morning and residential on night. Rather than uh over parking for all of that because with four thousand units, if you have to park all that as well as park all the offices, you just get parking structures and you don't get the offices in retail, which we do wanna see. Uh other key aspects of this, we have um post-skybridge which would go between two parking structures on either side of Redwood Road. Um so to kind of allow that bridge of Redwood Road uh to be safe and comfortable. There is a restaurant row that would lead to the track station. Uh that red location would be an event center type use, some sort of civic use. That's property. It's owned by the city, so um that could be a good use there. There's new open space here. A hotel, um in incubation market and restaurants. We also have UDOT on Redwood Road because it is a barrier to anything that happens in this area. And they've were surprisingly open and supportive of traffic calming measures in the area. As long as we can reduce the number of lanes, but they were okay. The narrowing lanes to widen sidewalks include pedestrian refuges and even to slow down the speed still um to make Redwood Road more approachable for pedestrians, at least in this two to three blocks initially uh through the stationary plan. And then as mentioned, um here's what we see that those uses from the city center could move out to fifty-six hundred West. You'll also see a kind of a room line there. That is the location of Granville Avenue, which is Collector Road in South Jordan. They've got money and uh design mostly done from the state to punch that through into Old Bingham Highway, so that would be coming through here as well, so that would be providing another uh north-south connection into South Jordan, tying in really close to where the new baseball stadium is being built.
Yeah, baseball stadium, baseball stadium's going in on you right there at Granville, isn't it? Yep, literally.
It's on Granville. So this is this kind of a an overview of what's in uh been talked about up to this point. Um I'm losing my voice. I'm gonna stop talking once you have questions for me.
So Mike, um Alan, can you go back about three slide, the the slide of the city center concept? That one. So I I'm just gonna point this out. Never mind, I read the map wrong. Um I was, I I just wanna make sure that um seventy-eight hundred south and the. And the. Design of seventy eighth is consistent from Redwood Road down to Gardner Village. And so that that becomes a nice. Yeah, I I gateway, uh thanks Larry, I was I was thinking, you know, you park on a driveway and you drive on a parkway. Uh that's it, but I like gateway, I like gateway better, uh we've just gotta make sure that that. That gateway at seventy eight hundred south continues all the way down to at least the bridge. Um that, you know, the U T A tracks bridge there, the the river that Chris is talking about, so. Let's let's just make sure that as we incorporate the plan that 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 those pieces of seventy eight don't get. Lost in the sauce.
Councilmember Pat. Great, thank you, Chair. Thank you for these renderings and all these great visuals, curious to compare and contrast with like a gateway or a city creek. What would you say that that similarity and difference would be here, because I'm grateful that we have Jordan Landing, which was wonderful when it came in, but it's not walkable. A big big sea of parking, as as we mentioned, lots of stop signs trying to drive through it. But this would be more of a walkable community, I like the future mixed use idea, I'm assuming you'd have the shops on the bottom. Apartments up top, a little bit of of density there, wh- what would you say the feel is to compare and contrast it with what we already see in downtown Salt Lake City?
Yeah, I think uh the better uh. Vision for what it'd be is more like um Sugar House twenty first hundred south kind of thing, we've got a lot of new development going in around. The Target and the movie theater there, I think that's more of the style we're looking at rather than the downtown or a gateway.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Jacob.
Oh, there's, I think there were a couple lights before mine, but okay, um I would really rather see this being planned for the whole. Thing and not just this little pieces, I'll 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 keep harping on this string and. Till I don't have a string to play anymore, but um. The problem that we've run into over and over and over again as the six previous plans have been not. Not uh what's what's right, we're not favorably received. Is had been thinking too small, thinking eighty five acres over here across the street and not. The three hundred acres or four hundred acres that we're talking about when you put these two centers together. If you think eighty acres, this is all you can plan for, and this is what you get. If you think three hundred acres, you can think a whole different vision. And we're not thinking the the state's mandate, so to speak, the state's direction is to plan for the whole thing. It's not to plan a piece of the stationary plan, but plan the whole thing. Let's get this right, we got a once in a generation chance to get this right. Now, and we and it's gotta be thinking bigger than this. I I said that, I've said that before, I'll say it again, this is, this is nice for part of it. But you're not gonna get the baseball diamond, you're not gonna get the hockey stadium, you're not gonna get anything. Anything landmarkish, anything to put West Jordan on the map, as long as you're thinking in fifty seventy five acre chunks. If you're thinking in three hundred, four hundred acre chunks, you can think a whole different way, nobody's thinking that way. And that's, so, so I mean, this is, this is nice. But if we start here, we'll end here, let's go bigger.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Taylor is. You're right, um is that dash line a trail, what is?
The other red one? Yeah, that is the idea is uh uh desperate to a trail which would continue all the way through to hopefully Bingham Junction. Station and Mid Valley up into Midville Main Street, so that'd be uh an opportunity to get all the way from. Uh the Jordan River and beyond up into this area on a nice uh next trail, which would be maybe optimal.
That's part of Bingham Creek, isn't it?
It is, yeah, I think that's that meeting that uh the council member from Salt Lake County was talking about, is also talking about some of these same things tonight.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that's what it was, thank you.
I enjoy seeing some of this on paper, but I I I worry about execution. Um this is a really, really challenging project um because of its location. You don't have the easy freeway access that a lot of others benefit from, when you look at. Things like a Farmington Station, or you look at what they're doing with redevelopment down where the state prison used to be, um we're wedged. We don't have a freeway off-ramp off of seventy eight, so folks are gonna have to come out of their way to to arrive here. Um tracks doesn't have quite the ridership uh that we would hope at this point. Coming from the other direction, coming from Bangor, people are coming right past Jordan Landing, so. As Councilmember Jacob said, this would need to be something big enough to be an intentional draw. To avoid cannibalizing what's already happening out at uh Jordan Landing and to a lesser extent Gardner Village, I think Gardner Village. Has enough unique elements that people are going there specifically to see that. Um I would worry that uh with the phasing, well, I I I'd like to see something that considers. Where where that critical mass to support the project is gonna be coming from, how they're gonna be arriving in addition to. Uh public transportation, um but.
That's a good point, and and we have some uh market analysis studies, but I think is what you'll see is. There's not a whole lot of retail in this, and that's intentional, we don't wanna cannibalize anything, there's. Uh the restaurant idea was maybe people go to the baseball games, like rear four state issues before the baseball stadium. They could get off here, walk down, uh have them drinks or have some food with their family, get back on the train and continue to uh daybreak. But also, you'll know this is very office and residential, and so this is creating a downtown. Uh a daytime population in this location to support some of those restaurants and those other shopping centers, but you're right, there's not a lot of retail there. Showing in this plan, and I think that was intentionally done is because we're not sure this area could support a lot of retail, we don't wanna. Support retail here by stealing it from other locations in the city which aren't performing well.
Yeah, whi- whi- which makes me wonder about the the residential component and if this um. Anyway, uh. I'll I'll leave it at that for now, thank you.
I I'm just gonna add, I've already asked, and I think we should continue to ask when you're talking long term. We need an I fifteen interchange at seventy eight hundred for West Jordan. To me, that should have been done years ago before the cleanup was done, but. You know, if you didn't do it after, when's the best time to start today, so we need to start fishing that as a city. Every time we meet with our community partners, we just need to put it on their maps and say we need this.
I recall when we were workshopping this West Jordan City Center, I think was it, yeah, last year? Um I think the number one of the number one reasons, if I remember correctly, is we wanted something unique, something that would set us apart, something that would. Intentionally bring people into West Jordan, and I I I don't really see it in this. Um so I really want, because you know, you go to different cities and you're like, oh, we're gonna go here, and it's nowhere near a major freeway or off-ramp, but you go there. Be to experience something, and we don't have that in West Jordan. And so I think when we workshop this a couple of years ago, that was something we all collectively as a council wanted, something unique, I'm gonna bring people here.
Yeah, I think that's that's my point, we can take that back, um the incubator market hall and incubator office, I think was one. Small way to try to to address those, to grow local businesses, but also as we we look across the valley in the region. Uh some of those things have been used for like really uh funky like art galleries and artist space and stuff, they've won in Ogden. Artists collectives that's growing and something similar to that, so those are all possibilities, it's. That that I pardon you, especially with these plans, like we're never gonna build this, as we see today, this is a concept and for the different types of uses, but. It's not gonna build like this, even if we had all the power in the world to. Speak into this and just like a plan since the city, it's not gonna turn out like this, it's going to be different, we're just trying to get the uses and everything right, so. I think that's something we need to continue working on and um that that point is something we should definitely take.
So, I'm gonna jump in here in here, I generally like this plan. I like the idea that what we're trying to do is. We're not, we don't wanna compete with Garden Village, we don't wanna compete with Jordan Landing. Um the incubator, the the I think that the incubator market hall, the incubator. Uh office space is a great idea, I'd like to to maybe even see like you're talking about expanding. Some art stuff and some of that kinda stuff. Here's what, here's, here's the perspective. That I want to, I like the, I like the festival park. And um. The, to me, and I and 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 I will say this now. And and then I'll address something else that you said, um Taylor. What that does is it puts. The onus on the city and the council to be able to hold activities in that. Festival space that brings people here. Arts festival, you know, an arts festival, a food and wine festival. All but, you know, you you see, you you know, you you see the 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 South Beach. Food and food festival that they hold in South Beach Miami, and they get thousands of people to show up, right? You you see the arts, the art stuff that Salt Lake does on uh. The City and County Building, Washington Square, I had to get the name right, we we see that, and so I think that puts the on- the the onus on us that. The part of the, part of the make to make this space unique and to attract what we want. Is on us to find out what the unique things are that we can bring people to these activities. And and I think that gives us a clean slate. But what I want, and I I mentioned this before, and again, I'm gonna continue to harp on this one as much as. Councilmember Jacob harpsaw going bigger, it's that you mentioned, we wanna have a restaurant road. So people might stop here on the way to the B stadium. Well, the only way we're gonna do that is that if we have some good virtual relationship with U T A, like. Um the U does, but when there's a football game, when there's a football game. Downtown, if you've got a ticket to race up the stadium, you can ride the tracks for free. We need that same thing, we've gotta have the, and we've gotta have, I think we have to have free fair zone between at least Midvale. Over there at Third Route and uh uh the sugar, the. The the sugar, uh the sugar street, the Sugar Factory Station. And be able to get people here and drop people from. You know, the Bingham Junction area and all those people who go there, they jump on the tracks and come over to this and do things and and we expand. We've gotta be able to use U T A and trails to 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 help with this. Because otherwise, if we don't, and you know, somebody has to pay, you know, it. It it it's difficult if you got tickets and all those other kinda things, so they got a ticket to the B game, alright, they can stop in West Jordan. They can stop in South Jordan and the same way on the way out, you know what I mean? So, let's, w- w- we've got it, not only uh we do we have, we do with. As Councilmember Jacob says, think bigger property, I think this is a good start, I think, think bigger on the property. We need to have a big vision of how they're going to help with this, that brings in the partners, U T A and us and everybody. To say, this is an events oriented thing to attract people and not not just have a piece of grass there that says. Okay, we can, I don't know, whatever, you know, I do concerts, all of those kinda things, we've gotta have those. There to bring, you know, to bring people. And you know, you you saw the success, I'm just gonna say, you saw the success of that makeshift. Um concert venue downtown this last summer, we saw that, well. This festival park is another good place to do those kinda concert venues and other activities, so let's not. Let let's not hang up ourselves there either, is that we need to start saying as we do this. The council, the city staff, everybody's gotta start have a big vision of what's going on here.
We talked about having a food truck row, is that still in this, is that the bluish color by the trail, or is that no longer in here?
Uh so this concept isn't showing the food truck road, but um. A restaurant row, which we're kind of probably get from the station, that's a plaza space, but it's not actually like a a road that you could drive on. Um with restaurants on like the lower level office and.
But we had, we had discussed having an area for food trucks in this areas.
Right, and and that still has happened, that's not shown in this concept.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, and thanks again for all of the information, I I always like just offering a devil's advocate viewpoint or just asking questions, so please no, it's not any. Thing discouraging at all, I I'm just trying to get some clarification because it seems counterintuitive to me. Uh a- as was mentioned, we had a lot of great conversation at Pioneer Hall with the with with the. W- with the meetings at preliminary at at least a year ago, right, when we were there. Um but help me understand the concept of not wanting to compete with Gardner Village or Jordan Landing, understandably, they're. Destinations, to to me, that would be akin to saying, well, let's not build City Creek because gateway is adjacent to it or. You you know, you talk about restaurant rows and it's statistically proven, right, that when you get a lot of restaurants together. Collectively, the aggregate, they they make more money, it it makes me think of the last few spring and fall breaks that I've taken to a destination. Uh such as going to San Francisco last year, my daughter wanted to see Alcatraz, and so we're there. For a destination, and of course, we're doing other shopping and restaurants and everything around it, or. Uh lately in Seattle to see the Space Needle, same same thing, we're not just there for the Space Needle, but that drew us there. Or in Las Vegas, the casino is just built way far away, it's usually. Uh on on the on the strip next to the others, I've sort, to me, it just seems counterintuitive, so he- help me understand why we. We want this to be good, but not that good, it just needs to kind of be average, because we don't want it to draw from anything else or compete. But like the like the food trucks, um gosh, I've seen that happen really well up in the holiday, you know, the pads for food trucks and be like, well. We don't wanna compete with food truck Tuesday up at Ron Wood, uh so it just seems counterintuitive to me, so help educate.
I brought that up, not wanting to cannibalize, and that was, the cannibalize is more the concern than compete. Because if we don't have something unique, if there's not a specific reason, folks happen to be right there, well, do I do this one or do I do that one? Walk run right past the one to the other, something that has to bring in net new revenue or net new individuals. So i- it's not the competition that I'd be concerned about, it's the cannibalization. If somebody's saying, you know, I'm just gonna go somewhere for dinner, you know, Gardner Village is right here, let's skip Gardner Village and go downtown. Uh don't necessarily want that, if someone want looking is looking for something specific, though, something unique, something that draws them in, that that's kind of what I was intending to convey. Not something that, we don't want something that cannibalizes and just shifts around the people who are already here, we want something that brings in additional people. Uh I hope that makes a little more sense.
Yes, thank you, yeah, and that wasn't directed just to you, it's just it seemed like a few different people have said, we we don't wanna. You know, have a a problem with com- competition, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you, uh both Councilmember Pack and McConaughey, that's that's exactly what I meant, uh when I say don't want to compete, I don't want. The the plan is not to attack the same big box stores which we have in those uh. Enjoy the landing, for example, we want it to be unique, and that's what we've heard is maybe some small mom and pop shops or specialty shops that we don't have. Anywhere else in the city, so this is a third spot, it has something that you don't have neither of those other two spots, because. The last thing they wanna do is have everyone from Jordan Landing move here, and then we have still same tax base, and we have all these empty uh. Delapidated buildings which then we have to rebuild, so that's.
Like they ended up with City Creek and gave me, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, thank you, well, that makes sense, cuz I was thinking, well, we have a love, why do we need a Home Depot? Well, yeah, you know, of course we want a Home Depot, so thank you.
So, and listen, but this goes back to my point, right, Garden Village is not far from here, it should not be, does this compete or. Cannibalize or contrast, it should be just integrate, Garden Village is not far. If you zoom out on this, not only, by the way, do not need another festival park, we got a huge old park. Right there, let's have some festivals, baby, bring it on, let's go, why wait, what are we waiting for? Um the mayor and I were the um the suicide prevention one over here a couple of weeks back.
Um the mayor and I went the um the suicide prevention one over here a couple weeks back. It was huge. It was ginormous. They had a huge, they brought in a huge state. It was big. Anyway, we got a place to do festivals. Let's do some festivals. But we don't have to wait for this this tiny piece of a park in comp- in comparison to that one. But that's what I'm saying, was you can zoom out of this, zoom out of this another twenty thousand feet and and look at. Both areas in total, your radius now includes Veteran Memorial Park and it now includes Gardner Village. And now you now you've got a a shopping and a retail and a and a nightlife and a and a. And a restaurant road and everything else, and you've got it included in this much bigger plan. That that also includes Pioneer Hall and also includes the cemetery. And that's that's all kind of integrated into it. You know, when you walk through downtown Boston, you walk past old historic buildings, no reason why we can't have old historic buildings worked into downtown West Jordan.
Yeah.
Right?
Uh thank you, compliment to Jacob. And you know, I I don't disagree with you and hopefully. Um. We are planning for the whole three station areas together and what will come through with implementation is going to be. Uh new code ordinances, which we have to write to allow for some of those things, and it's going to require general plan amendments. And those are all things we've already planned on and we're anticipating. The reason why this is so focused is because this is land that we feel like we can have. Direct control over, that we can do a phase one and we can, we can help this start off to. To catalyze all that. But yeah, we do need to go the full mile or more and we will plan on that. The plan will include.
But you're right, but we gotta start there and then come in and see which things we're gonna start with here. Because if we're doing this piece and then we're gonna plan outward, what we're gonna plan is gonna be a consequence of what already goes here. Let's plan the whole thing and then figure out what should go here. Um. Thinking Grow Rich, Self Help Books, these these kind of visionary uh. Uh genre of things, always talk about, think about the what before you think about the how. Picture what you want out on the big picture before we worry about, oh, well, I don't know how we get to there. Don't worry about that. Let's worry about the big plan first. Get the big plan right first. And then and then it will be obvious. Oh, well, well, I know what we could do right here because it fits within this big plan. Not what fits right here within what exists. What fits right here within what we want? This is this is the public keep running into over and over and over again. In in development, not just here, but the but citywide, and I'd say it's probably a just a. A an industry standard, is we focus on what is and then what fits within what is. We don't focus on what could be and then figure out how to get there. We we focus on, well, I've got the puzzle built this much. I can take this piece and shove it in right here. We don't think of, do I want a different puzzle? Let's, you know, let's, the state is asking us to do a great big project here. Let's do the great big project. And then we'll figure out what piece we can do as part of that project. But if we're thinking. Little piece, the next thing that we're gonna think of is another little piece. And then it's gonna be another little piece. And it's not gonna be a cohesive big. Plan. Uh we talked about cannibalization and and you brought up City Creek and and um and Gateway, and that's a that's a brilliant. Um observation because, you know, before Gateway was built, you had the two malls downtown and then somebody built Gateway. And they said, don't build Gateway, it's getting cannibalized two malls. What did it do? Cannibalized two malls. They they became vacant and and. Pretty much gone because everybody moved over Gateway. So what they do, they redid the two malls and made City Creek. And we said, don't do that, you're gonna cannibalize Gateway. What did it do? Cannibalize Gateway. Right, Jordan Landing was built, big huge tax center. We've had wonderful shopping there for decades. Then they built the district. What happened? Jordan Landing suffered because everybody moved to the district. And now the district is suffering because they built Mountain View Village. And now Jordan Landing is kind of coming back and it's kind of, and we're just moving from one to the other, to the other, to the other. Let's build something different. Nobody's cannibalized downtown Salt Lake yet. I mean, if if you if, this is building City Creek Mall when we shouldn't be thinking downtown Salt Lake. City Creek Mall is a piece of it. Downtown downtown West Jordan can be the second downtown in the state. Why are we, why are we thinking about it as, well, what can we squeeze into our little tiny city center? Let's, let's think bigger. Just keep, keep going.
I'm not seeing any other lights to keep going, so Taylor, any? Yeah, a- anything else on this one? Any other questions? Any specific insight or general consensus you need from the council on anything?
Um, no, I think we got what we are looking for and I appreciate all the comments. Um.
Ferris wheel. Big, big Ferris wheel.
Big Ferris with with gondolas, with windows on it so you can use it in the winter time. And then you have around it, you have a like a like a farmer's market.
Yes.
And and it's like a year round farmer's market and then you can do your your uh German Christmas market kind of thing there. And I will, I will tell you the cottonwood heights would buy lots on that gondola agreement that ran all the way from here to. A little private canyon and bypass the station. How do you watch it act?
No, but I'm I'm serious, something like that, something unique, our own version of a Space Needle, but not a Space Needle, but something that like. Brings everybody here, but a massive Ferris wheel, something.
The world's tallest building, but they said that wasn't doable.
Like a YouTube concert stage. Just kidding. Drink, you got that somehow.
Alright. Thank you, Taylor. So let's change gears now and talk about changes to administrative code enforcement hearings. Think we could hear from Paul Dodd on this one or?
Good evening, council members. Um I wanted to take just a minute here to kind of introduce what we're uh looking to bring to the council tonight. I'm gonna turn some time over. I've talked about the substance of what uh we're looking to engage with the council on on this matter. Um this is a topic that was brought to my office's attention, I think primarily by Councilmember Green. Um and Councilmember Whitebuck, I guess. Um I I know that the discussion that I saw was primarily involving Councilmember Green, so that's why. I think that one of the first things that I uh was getting up to speed with when I came into the office was this discussion. About the need to review the uh administrative law judge's role in the city. Um as I was coming in, uh we had, uh there was a bunch of discussion happening. Legal members were being prepared on different aspects of the issues that were involved in Title sixteen. One of the things that um we asked uh Mr. Chase Ames in my office to do as soon as he came in. Was to take a look at the way that we're currently handling uh A L J hearings. With code enforcement, animal control and other things like that, determine whether or not there weren't any constitutional problems with the way that we were addressing it. To make sure that we were prioritizing our review to hit the issues that needed to. And kind of de- determine the level of urgency behind what we're working with that. Uh once we determined, in the opinion of our office, uh that there weren't any constitutional issues. We turned to reviewing the section more broadly to look at um what changes would need to be made. Uh again, we received um some uh very valuable help from Councilmember Green. I think, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, it would have been around July, but we received a a red line version of proposed change. That was March, was it March that was redlining? Okay, well, so we add red line changes to Title sixteen. That went basically front to back through the title. Um our office has been working with those red lines since that time. Uh to look at the code to determine how the code lines up with what's currently happening in the city. Because we've found that there are some incongruencies with our current practices. And then also take a look at the code to determine from our perspective, um and using the red line uh. Revisions that we've received from Councilmember Green to look at what it could look like and what it should look like. As we've gone through that, we've determined, or demonstrated other sections in the code that are dependent upon upon what happens in Title sixteen. And I think also require attention. We've been working to prepare uh revisions that we can bring back to the council to show you. To get your uh feedback and input on those. Those are all primarily from a technical legal perspective. As we've been going through this, we did find a couple of issues that from an office's perspective are not strictly legal questions. Uh they're more policy questions. They're the kind of things where the city could do it one way or could do it a different way. And that's what we are wanting to bring to you tonight, uh are two of those questions that we've identified. To get your uh direction so that we can take that and incorporate that into the red lines that we're preparing to bring to the council. Uh hopefully in the uh very near future so that we can uh have that input to guide us. And that you can know what it is that you're getting when you see those red lines and so that all of the council can be involved in that input. Um it's been a big undertaking. Um I understand that there's some frustration at the time that it's been taking uh for us to get to this. Um I think that um there's also some frustration with the communication from our office and I want to apologize for that. Um it's something that I am committed to communicating more effectively uh to the council about the work that's happening as we're working on things. Uh like this, but again, it's a big undertaking and it's something that we're very much committed to doing right. Uh want to say thank you to Brock Hudson. He's been a great resource to us as we've been looking again at those practices, how things are happening currently in the city. Um but with that one introduction uh to everything, I'll turn the time over to Mr. Dodd.
Uh just one quick, and I'll go interject. Tonight, we're talking about two specific policy things. Um we have an R C A for a third one. That was the the one that Caitlin and I submitted that you've got for January, I believe, Alan. Um there's a third, there's a third piece of that that we 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 want to talk about. So what we'll do is talk about these two tonight, move to that third one here. Um in a couple of months and while we're working on the 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 red line version, once we get that done, we can finish up the ordinance. So we was, so we won't deviate tonight with that discussion. We'll just wait until that R C A pops up in January.
That sounds excellent. Yeah, no concerns from us.
Alright, so we have a, I think it'll come up, there's a little bit of just a. PowerPoint on the two issues we're talking about. The two issues that we're looking at. Where the first one is the service process and that's just the issue of, you know, when we have a notice of violation or we have, you know, a code, a code enforcement case that. Is brought to uh the city. Um what is the process for how we notify, you know, the residents? Of, you know, the violations. And right now, our current code, the process that is allowed. We can send out the notice via regular mail. Um we can also have that notice posted on the property. Uh you can also have the notice have personal service um on the owner. Um those are the main options for doing that. When some concerns were brought up. With with those options as far as if it's being mailed, um. Having would be done via certified mail. Uh and part of the reason of that is, you know, is obviously just be able to. Just be able to prove and show that, you know, it was mailed. You'll have people who will claim, well, I didn't, I never received anything in the mail. I didn't know about it. I didn't know I was in violation, et cetera. And, you know, so the concern is is to, you know, to be able to demonstrate and show, no, it was mailed. And build the proof, and this is the date and time, et cetera, that it was done. Um that's the concern. It hasn't been an issue practically for almost all cases. Um usually, you know, when people come in, they, you know, they know they've received a notice. We did have one case recently where. Uh that was something that, you know, they claimed that they hadn't received notice. And ultimately. They ended up admitting that they had received it, you know. But it is a concern that's been brought up of whether or not. We should not send, you know, at at least, you know, the one of the main, you know, the main notice out. Um via just normal regular mail and do it via certified mail. That's the concern. Look, but to look at that, we need to kind of understand what is it that we do. There's a lot of different notices that. Code enforcement does. And one of those notices isn't even part of a written access at this time. The first notice that's sent out right now under uh correct practice is a courtesy notice. And that was kind of, I'm extending that that's, you know, been fairly recent ever since to get it. Um just to give citizens kind of, you know, before they're actually getting the year end violation and these are the fines and fees you can pay. It's just to give them a courtesy notice, let them know that there's a problem and try to give them time to to fix that issue. That courtesy notice is sent out either via mail or hand delivered, you know, at the property. If, you know, when they're out there looking at the at the property, um. If the owner is there, you know, they'll give them a copy of the courtesy notice at the time if they're there or it's uh. You know, mailed um to them. And it gives them fourteen days to come into compliance. Uh after that, the code enforcement officer will go back out there to the property and look at the property again. And if they're, if they fix the violation, it's, you know, the case is closed and it's done. The violation is fixed. And all there was was a courtesy notice sent. Um if the violation isn't fixed at that time, when they go back out and inspect, then. A actual notice of violation is sent out to the property. And that's the one where it informs them, you know, that. You know, there'll be the fines and fees that could be possible. It also gives them a right to request a hearing if they don't believe they're, you know, they don't believe they're in violation. If they think that they're in compliance or there's a mistake, they can request a hearing at that time to fight about whether or not they're in violation. Um and, you know, it also gives them a time period to come into compliance. And so. Then, after the notice of violation was is is sent out. Code enforcement will go back out again for a second inspection um and see if the violation has been. You know, has been repaired. The the notice of violation, those were prior to the property owner to notify the city and ask for a reinspection. But a lot of people sometimes will not do that, you know, they'll maybe fix it and don't call and so. Code enforcement goes out and does the reinspection regardless if they're asked to go out or not. They'll go out and do. The the reinspection to see if they've come into compliance. And so it'll be the second time that they go out to inspect the property. After the notice of violation, they're not in compliance, that's the end. And, you know, the city will take further steps to try to. Enforce, you know, enforce the compliance with with the residents. Um and that will be a notice of one will be sent out. And that notice of hearing just lets them know that, you know, they felt they come into compliance, they're in default, they they didn't fix the issue. And it'll let them know that they're gonna have a hearing on the on the issue to have a default judgment against them for not coming in compliance. And um so there's a date provided set for the hearing, you know, they obviously. Lots of times people show up for the hearing, sometimes they don't, but um, you know, they are given the notice. And that notice again is done in one of three ways. Either it's delivered in person to the property owner if they're there. Or posted on the property, and it is mailed to the address of the property. The last one, address of the owner of the property, was sometimes isn't the same. If it's a real property. They look at this, they look at the kind of evidence to see who owns the property and they'll also mail out notices to the property owner. If it's different than the property address. And so those are kind of the three main ones that are done to try to get them into compliance. With, you know, with the with with ordinances. Um. We are in compliance with state law to send it via regular US mail. If not, out of compliance, uh Utah Code ten dash eleven dash two specifically states that it can be mailed to the property. Uh it doesn't require it to be certified mail in in the state statute. So we are in compliance, but. Even. I have perhaps a few concerns about, okay, you know, if it was mailed, sometimes it can be difficult to try to, you know, to try to show. The case ended up being a hardly contested case, which happens rarely, but it does happen. Um we have to show and prove that it was sent can be a little bit more difficult. Um so there are some benefits to, you know, having some of the, you know, having. Possible certified mail option, being being out there to be able to show and prove that it that it was done. Um even though we're not out of compliance, there are some benefits to doing that. The options. Well, we was talking about that, this is something that is important to understand with uh sending out certified mail. There's a little over two thousand code enforcement cases each year that code enforcement handles on average. Um and those places approximately. Um, and those cases, approximately three hundred of them, it's found to have any violation at all, meaning. They get, they get it from paint, they go up to the property, they look at the property and they don't see a violation. Um, so approximately three hundred of two thousand, there is no violation. So nothing is sent to the property owner. No courtesy notice, no notice of violation, nothing. Um, out of the next step, uh, you know, land a courtesy notice, that is sent out. But nine hundred to a thousand of those places, so I guess it'd be about seventeen hundred cases where a notice is sent out. Approximately nine hundred to a thousand of those cases resolve after the courtesy notice. So if strict courtesy, there's not any official notice of violation sent. And the vast majority of those resulted at the courtesy notice stage. Then approximately five hundred of those cases don't comply at the courtesy notice stage. So then a notice of violation is then sent out to, to the homeowner. Uh, then, you know, another inspection will be done. And those, and those, then, or two hundred of them, every act, like, uh, a hearing notice, it's been a hearing scheduled and a notice sent out for a hearing. So if you take it from two thousand, only right here, and so only scheduled on about ten percent of the cases. Um, and so there's a lot of options on, on what we could look at as to. Do we want to send out anything via certified mail? If we do, then do we want to send out a certified mail? Uh, these are part of the options on this issue that obviously are, right, here's what the council have a look at. And we could keep the process the same as we have it. Um, that's an option. I do think it's, you know, it's, that's like, well, we could mail certified. As, you know, certified mail for all courtesy notices, but that'd be approximately seventeen hundred notices a year. And we're looking at depending on what the certified mail you wanna do, if it's just, if it's certified mail with an electronic receipt, I think it's around a little over five bucks. If it's a, a, you know, certified mail with a signed receipt with the green part, I think it's about eight bucks. Um, but there would be significant expenses if we did that seventeen hundred cases a year. Most of those resulted at that stage with no issue and it's, and it's not even a, an official notice of violation. Uh, we could send it out on the ones for just notice of violation. But again, you know, then you're looking at, you know, four or five hundred cases a year, which would still be a, you know, there, there would be an expense. And, you know, and staff time to do that because it does take more time to do certified mail than it does normal US postage mail. Um, so that'd be a piece of staff time and an increase of, of cost of the mailing. But that is an option to do it at the notice of violation stage. Um, another option is to do it just at the notice of hearing stage. So then they're going to, when they're being informed that they are going to have a hearing. Um, and the city's seeking to have a, you know, a default against them for not coming in compliance and to have the fines and fees. I mean, uh, we could just do it at the notice of hearings. Those, those are part of the options on what we could do. Just kind of looking for, doing that, unless you have to defend the issue before we move on to the second issue, it's probably smart to do that.
Are we allowed to take that expense of it and add it into the fee that they are getting anyways? So that covers that cost?
If it's resolved, though, there is no cost that they pay.
Well, I mean, if, if, so that was make sense if it goes something to like the hearing or if they pay the fee. If they end up paying the fee, then they should just add the cost to the mailing unit to that.
I mean, I, that's definitely an option that we could look into, um, to see, I mean, right now. A lot of these cases though also, I mean, you don't get paid out from these fines and fees at the time of the case, even if we could go to the hearing and we have it. It's, sometimes you do, but it's very often that you don't get paid out those fines and fees at that time. Um, a lot of people will just let those sit and we'll just kind of have that default against them. Um, and it can sit until, you know, maybe later when the property sells or whatever, you know, um. But it's um, it's definitely an option that we could, you know, we could look into. Likely we could include that as a, as an expense that would be a cost in the, in the case to.
To, to that point, um, it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty to sixty-five percent of the cases that come through where the, the individual doesn't comply. They don't show up for their hearing as well. And so we end up with just basically a claim against them. And to collect on those claims is also very labor intensive. And so to, to expect that we would recoup that cost on the certified mail. Most of the cases is probably not going to happen in the short term, um, just for perspective on that.
I mean, it was a good, it was a question to figure out of poss- possibilities, so.
Has the uh, city ever been sued or uh, a, 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 a case challenged to the point where. Um, where it was found that we were in violation of due process and therefore we lost the case?
The Mountain West tolling case is a, it wasn't done exactly under the same type of procedures because it was a little bit of a different. Uh, uh, it was a little bit of a different process that was done in that case. Um, but there are some similarities and things that are analogous to look at in that case. Um, and in the Mountain West tolling case, they were alleging, at least one of the seven individuals were, were, they were alleging that they didn't receive a copy of the notice. It looked in my way, it wasn't until trial that you admitted on the stand she actually did receive it, but that was, you know. Uh, si- six years later that, you know, she finally admitted, but there was some other issues besides just receiving the notice. Um, that were in play on that case. And so the due process issue that we ultimately did moves on. At the notice one didn't end up being, you know, once the actual receipt of the notice didn't be the issue we lost on.
Gotcha. And it, it's not uncommon, it is a minority of cases when people come into their hearings and say, well, I didn't get the mail of it. Maybe ten percent of the time is what I'm hearing here. Um, it hasn't been risen to the level where somebody went to court and challenged it at that kind of level in our, in our city. But it, it is not uncommon entirely for somebody to come in and say, well, I never got the mail.
I've gotta think there's case law on this though, right?
Yeah, it's so, for, yes, if, um, the statute allows it to send it via mail. And if we, you know, if it was someone that challenges us and if we were able to have the officer say. No, I know that I'm mistaken. It's in my notes. It's here. Um, you know, it'd be an issue for a jury to decide whether or not they believe that the notice was sent and.
It's, it's credibility of the witnesses to say whether I did or didn't.
And as. Right, and, and, and at the end of the day, at the end of the day, it's not the city who would be on the hook. If we can say that we followed the, we followed the process according to state law and they didn't get the notice, whatever they're suing because, you know, we.
Unless they didn't believe we mailed, but they do not believe that we mailed, we took it on.
I mean, even as, even as it goes back, if we have, if we have reasonable evidence that, that we did mail it. Then it's the state statute that gets struck down. It's the state. It's not the city's process that's the problem. It's the state's law because we complied with what the state law said. Right? We're a subdivision. We hear that all the time, right? Um, so I, I'm just, one of the reasons for my asking the questions is I'm just trying to figure out, is it broke? If it's broke, we need to fix it. If it's not broke.
Um, I would say that it's not broken, but that would be.
I think it's, it's, that's, that's the question we're bringing to you is do you think it's broken? Would you like us to fix it? Because again, we're, uh, if we look at it purely from a, a state of the law perspective. We think that we're compliant with all of that and we're okay, but do we want to do it differently? Would we like to provide better notice, more reliable notice, earlier notice, something along those lines? You know, we certainly can do that, but are we required to? Uh, not strictly required to, no.
Thank you. It seems that similar to anything else, there, there's always a pro and con. Even if we did certified mail, my experience has been when I've tried to certify people, especially in today's digital age, that they check mailboxes less and less. And then by the time they check it, it's returned to the sender where they specifically don't want to receive it, so they don't sign for it. And it just doesn't work that way either. So what I've had the most success with is just posting it on a door because, right, you can post it or give it to an adult or certify mail it, one of the three options, right? And so I just post it on the door and I know people don't go on their front doors anymore too. They go in the driveway and it could be a week before they go on the front door. Uh, but then I just take a picture of it and I've actually had that hold more credibility. Showing, yes, you did it, kind of like how Amazon takes a picture and shows they actually did deliver your package. Whether it was there or not when you got home, well, that's another story. Um, but uh, that has tended to have more credibility than certify, certifying a piece of mail and not having someone sign for it intentionally. Trying to uh, to, to get out of that. So just curious, wouldn't that be? If, if there's a pro and a con, either way, why not just go on a easier, less expensive route? And have some tape that doesn't peel paint off, but stays there in some rain. And then you've got the, the notice and you've got a picture of it for your files.
We do, because code enforcement currently will, on the ones that they post on the property. They will tape it to the door and they will take a photo and ha- keep that photo in the file. Um, since there's options, you know, it's not every single case that they posted on the property, but they do do it often. It, it's, it is very common for that to be, you know, the process they use to serve the notice. And when they do post it on the property, they do take a picture and keep that in the file.
So, so here's my.
Thank you.
One, if we do it by certified mail, we're closer in compliance with, to the, with Utah Rule Four, right? Cause Utah Rule Four requires that the service or summons, if you're gonna send it by mail, it has to be signed for. So here's, here's my concern, Councilmember Pat, that directly addressed your question. And you'll see this, and in, in, and Alan, will you back up one slide? Uh, um, maybe, anyway, that, that. So the, the issue that I see that we can run into, and this is where I want to make sure that we're clear. Is that when we get to a notice of hearing, we may be considering property abatement, right, Brock? Property abatement may not be cheap, may actually be cheaper than the fun, right? If all we do is post something on a door. The renter of the property says, that's nice, I don't give a crap. And the owner is the one that gets stuck with the, 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 the property abatement and the owner doesn't know. So that, that, that's, that, that, in, in, in my mind, and that's why. I like the idea at the notice of hearing stage, that last final stage. I like the certified mail or personal service or sundang thing. So that the property owner, who's gonna, you know, and, and we have a hard time collecting, but a lot of the collections are done through. Your, the, the city attorney's office and through the treasurer with help with property tax liens and all those other kinds of things that we. But who ends up paying? It's the property owner. And if the property owner's not got, i- if we go in and say, well, we mailed it to you. And that, the, yeah, we're charging, we, we find the property owner and we charge him a great big abatement amount without. Really a substantial notice. That's where I'm concerned. It, it's, you know, if it's, if it's posting it on, you know, if you came and put, posted something on my door, you, you obviously I get taken care of. They posted on the rental property down the street, what's the renter gonna do? And I don't care. And we notified the property owner and the property owner, we, we all know property owners, you know. I- if you mail that, may, you may be mailing it to a registered agent, the registered a. Now, I think there was actually a court case recently about the registered agent, I think it was in, here in Utah. That the registered agent didn't notify the, 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 the principal rate and the court said, not too bad, the, 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 the registered agent got it. But I think we need that, you know, a fundamental sense of fair play there. That at some point in time, we need to make sure, what we need to make sure. And, and maybe a, as, as we talk about stepping up and getting in the Black Hawk and going up a thousand feet. Is that, that the fundamental principle here is making sure the property owner knows that. Um, that there's notice of hearing. Now, if that means that we decide that we want to mail it out and say that they have, like Rule Four says, that they have a duty to keep expenses down. And they sign and say, yeah, I'm acknowledging that there's an, if we want to do that. You, you know, we want to do that first when we do some sort of acknowledgement that there's notice of hearing that because they have a duty to. Um, avoid the expense and they sign, then I'm good with that. And, and so I, I, all I want to do is make sure the property owner that's gonna end up getting stuck with the fines, the, the abatement costs. Uh, those kind of things, potentially dog owners, those kind of things, that it's the true person that, that is held accountable for it. And that the prop, that the renter or somebody just didn't rip it off their door or do something. You, you know where I'm going?
Yes, and uh, they're good points. I, a couple of issues related to address those, um. If the property owner is, the address for the property owner is not the address of the residence, even if we post on the property. Code enforcement, we have highways in every incidence. Mail a copy of that notice that post on the property to the property owner's address that's listed with the county recorders. Now, it's not certified mail, just because state law doesn't require it. It is US, you know, just the normal US postage prepaid mail. Um, so, but it was mailed to the property owner. And if the property owner fails to keep their address current with the county. I mean, there's nothing we could do. I mean, that's their obligation to do that for the property and there's nothing we could do if they're gonna keep their address current. Regardless if it was sent via certified mail or just normal mail, that would be an issue. Um, and as to Rule Four. Obviously, you know, one of the lawsuits you do in the service of process under Rule Four. Where's the, oh, then what the service process is under ten dash eleven dash two? But, you know, there are differences in that. In this instance, we're not required to follow Rule Four as a, as a civil procedure. That's just a law suit or litigation that go with the district group. Um, and so we're not required to follow it, but it is, you know, it obviously does not kind of a benchmark of trying to establish a, a fair due process of notice. But um, we are following the current state law on the due process on that one, which doesn't completely coincide with what Rule Four says.
Well, right, but I mean, I, my, my thought was. We need to do everything we can before we do a default. And, and sending it to, to the, to the property owner without getting some sort of signature kind of leaves us in a lurch, right? Because then we say, okay, we're doing default, we're gonna property abate, it costs five thousand dollars. And the property owner comes back and says, wait, I didn't know anything about this. I could have cleaned this up in two thousand dollars. Be, and, and we haven't had very many of those, but, you know. I would rather, I would rather be more on the side of transparency and making sure the property owner does that. So, you know, how do we, how do we do that? Is that something more akin to that if we, if we do it by mail, that we say, please, please return the, you know, please return this posted print paid card that acknowledges that you got a hearing? And, and, and maybe, I, I, I'm just throwing out a couple of ideas. Maybe that's the first step to try. Is print, is print out a, a card that says, I acknowledge, I acknowledge the, the, that I have a notice of hearing and try that. Um, get, you know, and see what the response rate is and, and telling them that, you know, we're trying to keep your costs low. I don't know. I just want to make sure the property owner who's eventually gonna get stuck with this bill, if it's a rental property. Um, or may, you know, or maybe it's a son and daughter that's living in mom and dad's house. Um, or those kind of, I just want to make sure the property owners got clear, clear notice that they're, they're facing. Um, some fines or abatement opposed to just a, a letter that may not make it.
And, and yeah, at, at the end of the day, sorry, I just, be really, really fast. I promise. At the end of the day, our goal is, is um. Compliance, not punishment, right? We're not looking for retribution. We're looking for, we're looking for people to obey the code. So, um, whatever assists in that process is what I'm in favor of. Um, I, I don't mind the certified mail for the last one, for the, you know, notice. When, when you're actually gonna get fined, you know, the courtesy notice, it probably doesn't make sense, but further down the line. Um, um, and, and with that. And and with that said, it's my wife's birthday and she's better looking than any of y'all, so I'm gonna go. So I gotta pick up the cake on the way home, so, thanks, we'll see you later.
So we will excuse Councilmember Jacob and encourage him to grab some flowers as well. My two cents, bullet number three and number four, I would support. My inner economist wants to see if there's a statistically significant difference between compliance when somebody gets a letter in the mail. Versus when they get a certified letter. The other thought is to have somebody physically go to the house and get a signature. Three and a half bucks, that's pretty cheap to get, oh, or is it three, what? If it's under ten bucks, we're still getting a killer deal, having somebody go there in person, so I would very much support doing number two and bullet three and four. Councilmember Whitlock.
I like the idea that Councilmember. Green gave as we sent out last letter that you have this hearing, that there's a postcard in there that they sent back. And if we don't get it back, then we go to the certified mail. Just, I think, to keep us safe. I I that would be my first level.
And certification for the certified mail. Does the council want that because there's obviously options for different types of certified mail? One can just show, it gives you a proof of vers- that it was actually delivered to the address. It's electronic proof that they say, yep, it was delivered on this date time, so then we have verification from. The post office of the date and time of delivery, that's one option, it's cheaper, it's around five dollars. The other one is the signed return receipt, which, you know, the kind of Councilmore pack brought up the issues of. If someone refuses to sign or whatever, then it comes back to us and there's not a signature, but that costs eight dollars. Are we looking at the signature one, are we looking at the just proof of the mailing being delivered one? And if we are looking at the signature one, when it comes back as not signed for, is then that sufficient? To, you know, we've met our due process, we've done everything we can to do.
Also, one other point, just to take into consideration when we are requiring them to take action to return something. It does delay the time for us to take action. And so with some of these code enforcement cases where we're hearing from neighbors to say, I want this fixed now. That does delay the time that the city would be able to take action on something, so particularly if we're talking about kind of contingency. Approaches to things where if they don't take action to one and then we're going to go to another, it will delay that process, and I only say that just for consideration.
But we're getting to two hundred that go to a hearing out of the two thousand, so it's only ten percent that we're talking about. My comfort level would be to have the signed letter, to have them have to sign for the receipt, which. I think I looked up and it's an extra three bucks. Three seventy-five, actually. But I, as Councilmember McConaughey said, that's that's. Not a lot, as is Councilmember Bloom said, add it to their fee.
Does code enforcement prefer a certain way? I mean, do they have an opinion that they would, you'd prefer? Because I wanna, if there's something glaring that we're missing that you are, I I wanna make sure we're thinking of everything.
Kid, could you please, please come to the microphone?
Come on, Brock, get up here. I appreciate the uh the concern, Councilmember Bloom. With going out to the property on three or four occasions already prior to the service. We've posted on the door, we've posted on garage doors, uh we've put notices under windshield wipers, indoor handles. You know, we've done most of that. Uh I guess my question would be, is if the owner resides at the address of occurrence, are we still posting it and sending certified? Or are we just duplicating the work for the currently two officers I have for the city?
For me, for me, it's for the, when the owner is not the occupant. That's when I want for sure a certified letter going out with a signature. Basically for those that are uh property owners that don't care for the property.
Understand, a- and that's, we don't see that as an issue, we can do that. Um, but as as Josh had mentioned, it is gonna extend our process a little bit. Currently, if you go by the exact dates, it's a two-month process. By waiting for returns and things of that nature, you could add another week or even more uh on to the end of that. So, this without understanding, we don't have any issue with doing it as as Councilmember Whitlock suggested.
So, Brock, out of these two hundred that go to a hearing though. At least my experience in my neighborhood is, when they get to that point, they just don't care and until they're ready to sell the house and they find that lien. They don't do anything anyway, so how many of these two hundred that go to a hearing actually come into compliance?
Uh, we probably get about sixty seven, sixty percent uh compliance out of the hearing. Because we are willing to work with the people, i- if the judge may order a seven hundred and fifty dollar fine for a violation. But if you come into compliance within a time that the judge orders and pay your reinspection fees. We'll go out and reinspect and if it passes, that a very, very large portion, if not all of that fines is waived. You know, our goal, as Councilman Jacob said, isn't fines, it is compliance. But we do only get it, and we had hearings this last week, and I told Josh we had nine hearings coming up, I told him four people will show up. Four people showed up.
You should have not told him, you should have better.
Um, but that's about the turnout we get, so. Did you have something?
To me, it just seems the more steps that someone has to take to actively go sign something or go to the post office to pick up a letter. You just won't have as high of a response rate, so it just depends on. What the goal is, h- how much the city's trying to cover the legal necessity of being in compliance versus actually having someone. Take action, and if there's a prepaid postcard, I mean, it makes it convenient, but then that's a double postage charge unless it's a. Non-charged, when you know how you get those in the mail, it's a business reply item, so it's not posted, but. So I'm not opposed to having the green card on the back that someone has to sign and that gets mailed back, it's just a. It it just seems like more arduous the task and it's gonna be tough to to get. Um, I definitely do agree that there needs to be the dual notice when the occupant is not the homeowner. So, thank you.
So what would, what would happen? Kind of, I I'm sitting here thinking, cause I, cause I see where this would delay the process, right? What would happen if we did a hybrid? We send out the electron, we send out the certified mail with the tracking. Along with a card that says, acknowledge the hearing, you have duty to to acknowledge the hearing. Then they, then they acknowledge, th- then if they decide, they acknowledge the hearing, right? If they don't, we still have the presumptive proof that they they got the letter. Right now, what we don't have is we don't, the only thing we can say is we threw it in the mailbox with state mail and. And did it get jammed in the machine or not? If we do it certified mail, we've got the tracking that says we know it got delivered. It got delivered, at that point, we would, it maybe it would be nice to have the signature to say, yeah, you acknowledge it. But if they don't return that signature or the letter comes back unsigned. Um, then we can move forward because we know that it was undeliverable and statute allows us to move forward. Does that make sense?
I know, I know my opinion on this isn't important, having dealt with parties trying to dodge service of. Process in earlier stages in my career, I think it's a valid concern, that if we're telling somebody. Oh, you need to sign for this, and if you don't sign for it, then we're not gonna take action, and issue, they're not gonna sign, and so I I think. Relying maybe just on the tracking confirmation and delivery without expecting that return action. May be a more prudent choice, again, just personal, uh you know, experience that I've had on that.
But but if we drop, if we drop prepaid postcard into the end of the envelope with it that says, yeah, I I acknowledge, I have a hearing on this date. We're only adding fifty cents and just dropping a card in, right? So, what what I'm wondering is, and 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 ma- and maybe what we do is we require in the ordinance. To do the 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 basic certified mail for that, for that notice of violation, particularly for the. Um, the owners in absentia. Um, and maybe we do it with just the the the, you know, that's the notice violation, they have to taking care of everything else. Unless we can personally serve and we do, we we send them that letter too. That. That's the code, but we adopt practice to drop card in and see what they'll find. And look at that process in six months or a year and see if it works. If it, if it works, great, because that goes with the notice and it goes in the case file, we can get a report, say we love it, keep the di- do it. If not, we can just say, drop that process and move on. Uh, you know, kind of like trial, just just a thought.
So go back to the question is to type of certified mail, I would be. Fine with either one of those, um, I still think with. With remediation being the goal, I still think we're gonna see higher higher success with certified mail than the. The regular mail, and as Brock pointed out, the number of different hand-delivered methods, just don't have the same. I don't know, if somebody taped something to my garage, I'm not gonna take it as, uh i- i- it may be viewed a little bit differently. Than a certified letter that shows up in the mail, I may be taking that one a little bit more seriously. I know code enforcement goes above and beyond and goes out of the way to uh reach out to people and connect with them and make sure they know what they need to do. Uh, but psychologically, there's just a difference between something taped on your home versus the certified letter that shows up in the mail, so. I would like to see us do certification of some type for the notice of violation, I think we'll see increased compliance. And then for the notice of hearing, um, I'm not opposed to the postcard idea, I wouldn't want it to impact the timeline any further. Um, but I would suggest wording the postcard saying something to the effect of. Your hearing is scheduled for this day, this time, if you need to make changes, please contact us here. Um, or know that you can be found in default or something like that, and trying to respond that way, so we get an acknowledgement or or something that says, please sign, I don't know. Give giving them an opportunity to weigh in on on the hearing. Some method with that postcard, I think might help elicit a response rather than just, hey, sign here to acknowledge that you're in trouble. Yeah, probably won't gonna sign that.
Any other questions, comments, needs? So could I just clarify then, what what happened this? So I'm hearing consistent interest in having certified mail required for the notice of hearing across the board. I didn't, uh is that, yeah, okay, and and we're good that. Uh, it was less clear to me on notice of violation if we want certified mail at that stage.
I I I would, I I'd be curious to see how it impacts our. With the notice of hearing, we've got ten percent of folks that end up in that bucket, right? So if there's something we can.
No, the notice of hearing is approximately. No, sorry, notice hearings ten percent, notice violation is four to five hundred.
Yeah, so the no- so the notice of hearing is ten percent, I'm not as concerned about that, I think those are gonna be problematic anyway, so. Uh, it's the notice of violation and the repeated requests we get from residents to do more about code enforcement. I think this is a relatively inexpensive way we can try and do more, relatively inexpensive way that we can try to. See an increase in compliance by just sending the certified letter as opposed to. Doing the same things that we've always done for years, I I would love to give it a shot. And maybe we just try it for a year, maybe not codify it, but try it for a year, but I would really like to see us give a shot to that notice of violation being sent certified to see if it does have an impact.
I would be supportive of that for a, for a trial period.
There is a way to do certified mail where you buy these s- special envelopes. That you basically just put the letter in and everything else is done, so. Uh, we ma- it it may be, you you know, they're not that expensive, maybe that's what we look at for for that. I'm on the fence either way, I could live with notice violation for a trial period. Uh, I I don't wanna increase the cost or the burden on the staff that much, but if there's a, if there's a way we can do that where. Uh, we're using the 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 envelope and not using those, that that we do the the right envelopes and those kind of things. I'd be okay with trying it.
I think my only suggestion, if i- if I may. Yeah, just real quick to chime in on what Councilmember Green was saying, budgetarily, that means we need to make changes to the. Well, to the budget for code enforcement, then obviously we've gotta follow through with that, but I think a lot of residents have been asking for that, so. I I'd be in favor of seeing a budget to help accommodate what we're asking, I don't think anybody on the council is going to say, do more. But with less money and with fewer resources, and we know that. Uh, your department is going above and beyond already, can they go a little further beyond, can can your guys fly? I know they from wa- on water, can we try and get them to fly as well? I I I don't think we're asking for that, so we we need to be realistic in what we're asking, if there's a budgetary impact and we ask for that, well then, put it in the budget.
There is one scene, one thing that I want council to to make sure they understand. We get a large number of properties where we'll send certified to the homeowner out of state. Are we doing certified to the property as well? I mean, we may get some cases that have four or five addresses we mail to.
I I'd say go for it, and that's probably in the minority of cases though, right, like percentage.
Yeah, it's it's probably twenty to thirty percent of the cases, but can, you know. Work its way up to a pretty good budget yet.
For for me, I would guess that those are probably out-of-state landlords, and if I were living next door to one of those. I would very much want the city to try every address and every method, and if it ended up five letters and fifty bucks to do it. I would be appreciative of my tax dollars going to help make things a little nicer, so I I'd personally be okay with that, but I'm one of six.
I'm gonna have to say I agree, I will, I want, I want to know, the neighbors are gonna to know that we did everything possible.
Absolutely, I have no problem with it, I just want clear, I just want. And I'm okay with a, you know, when when, one one, once we look at this and put it in the code, I'm I'm willing to do a budget amendment and pulling the money out of council. Contingency to fund it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm willing to fund it, I do wanna do it more as a, as a trial though, I wanna see. If compliance goes up, because if it does, then we're on the right road, if it doesn't, we need to do something different.
My inner economist really wants to see the difference between standard mail versus certified letter and compliance rate.
Do we maintain a database of dual notification like we do with utilities, for instance, when uh. Uh, rental property here in West Jordan is. Uh, in danger of having water shut off, an email is sent to the property owner and that. Solves the problem in a lot of cases. Do do we do anything digitally for free? Courtesy notice.
Not as a code enforcement uh notification, we don't have the email of the. Okay, code enforcement does not do yeah, an email or a electronic notification. Business licensing will send them out for your uh renewal. But code enforcement does not have the email address of the owners, we pull all of our information from the GIS system. Which pulls it directly from the county records. So we, and they don't have, they don't provide any personal information.
So would it be possible for you to get the email information from either? Utilities or business licensing?
Uh, we could, well, we could definitely check with utilities, um, that will take some. Some work for IT to manage as well as a place. To locate that information in the code enforcement portion of City Works.
Or could we go the other direction and get utilities to provide provide that data to GIS?
I'm game anyway, anyway, we can do it.
That sounds like an administrative issue.
Well, and and as as we're talking about that, the the let's. It, you know, it is if, if we try this as a trial period in the end. Brock, you see things in Civic Works or other software that would help identify it's to do quote unquote electronic service or follow up. Electronically with some of these people because we're able to capture their email, um, some with somehow. Um, you know, when we're talking to it, when you're talking to them the first time, if you can get an email address or some. Maybe there's some of those kind of things that we can look toward to do that, and that just to, you know, the better communication. The more that we do it, I I think Councilmember McConaughey is right, we're gonna get better compliance.
I agree with Councilmember Green, that I'm right.
Councilmember Pat.
Good job seconding that motion yourself. No, I I'm grateful for the conversation, I always, wonderful when we can make progress and it'll be interesting to see, as we said, with. Each action, there seems to be. Each action, there seems to be an equal and opposite reaction. We'll see where the cost and time and noticing benefit go. I'd also like to mention that I've had numerous conversations with, uh, Mr. Lee and Mayor Burton. Regarding taking this a step further in how we word the notices and the way that. Code enforcement is reported to. I've been contacted by numerous residences, like when it rains, it pours. Numerous meaning eight or ten residents of, in different locations of my district with different issues. And there are some very unfortunate circumstances where people, of course, feel they're being singled out. Why, why, when other people aren't in compliance and I getting singled out? And then they think they know who reported them. So then there's retaliatory measures going on. Yelling at a different family's kids or flipping them off and obscenities and, and there's some genuine concern for safety. Of residents and it's leading to a lot of contention within neighborhoods. Um, and I don't pretend to have all the answers, but I'd love to continue taking this discussion one step further. Um, one, uh, one can make that happen. Thank you.
Moving on to the next part. One last issue on this one. The courtesy notice is not codified in our ordinance right now. It is, um, council favors having that codified.
Absol- absolutely.
Like you know, three.
I'm not sure about codification myself. Um, if it's being done administratively, I'm, I'm okay with that. If. We don't have to codify that. If it is a property that's been a repeat offender with other things, I don't necessarily want us to have to reset the clock and go back. I'd like some Curtis or I'd like some flexibility if possible. Um, I like that we do the courtesy notification, so I'd like to see it continue. But I don't necessarily know that I wanna codify it and potentially make the timeline longer if we know that a certain property. Might abuse that part of the process if it, if it's required.
I, I would think that we can codify it in a very generic term. So that when the residents look at it, they know what the process is and it does the, and it's always the same. You know, that's, that's one of the things that we always look at. And so. I, I would suggest, and I think I saw it, Councilman Pat, Blum, me and. Councilmember Whitelock, let's look at a, uh, I'm gonna suggest a very, you know. I, I know where Councilmember McConaughey is going. Let's look at a very generic way to codify it that doesn't handcuff it. But it does outline it in the process somehow.
Uh, I just wanted to, um, address Councilmember Pax's concerns. We have rewritten the courtesy notice at the direction of Mr. Lee. Um, that notice has been softened up quite a bit and put into circulation starting last week. So that was taken care of.
All right. Moving on, please. Um, the next one is dealing with, uh. The destruction of vicious, dangerous animals. Um, right now, apparently those are being adjudicated before our administrative law judge. Uh, and there's discussion about whether or not that's the best place to have it done, whether it should be done in our justice court for Judge Coons. Um, under our city ordinance. It outlines the, uh. Enforcement for the dangerous animals, um, and B, it says every animal so vicious and dangerous that it cannot be controlled by reasonable strengths and. Every dangerous and vicious animal not effectively controlled by its owner or custodian. So that the animal cannot injure any person or property as a hazard to public safety regarding sex annuals, animal control officers may issue an emergency order. And notice of violation entitled sixteen to code seeking administrative authorization to store and muzzle the animal. So right now we're doing it administratively. And it's going to the administrative law judge. Um, the concerns, there, there's no concerns brought up about. Whether or not the administrative law judge, um, handling those proceedings, um. Is, is that in compliance with the United States Constitution, what mainly, uh, you know, amendment four? Um, we looked at this extensively, uh, under state law, we are authorized. To handle these proceedings, um, we've looked at the different cases and different issues related to it. It's the city attorney's position that. Legally, we are okay to handle those cases, uh, through the administrative law judge. However, there are some, you know, benefits to look at to handling those cases before the justice court. Uh, a couple of those benefits that could be is the justice court judge, you know, would be able to handle both. Cause normally. Even if the bird is being sought to be destroyed, which we don't have a ton of those a year, it's maybe half a dozen a year, maybe, miss, you know, um. But I wonder when that happens. There's also a criminal proceeding against the owner that's already going on in justice court. Um, so there's kind of two proceedings, you know, one's an administrative law judge for the, the destruction of the animal and the other one is in justice court. You know, for, uh, you know, the misdemeanor against the homeowner. And so handling that case. The adjudication of the dangerous animal before the justice court would have those both being handled by the same court. Same judge, there could be some efficiencies there doing it that way. Also, our justice court judge at Coons has the power under state law to issue warrants, um, which. Could be a benefit. Most of the cases that we have, the animal is not seized from the homeowner. Um, the animal is either large and running around and so he's picked up or the homeowner voluntarily. Um, released, you know, relinquishes the animal to the city because of the, the incident on their own voluntary, um. Option to do so. And so that's what happens on the vast majority of cases. I think there was a situation where, you know, the animal was in the possession of the homeowner and we were seeking to. To have, uh. This process of adjudicating, you know, the dangerous animal. The justice court judge, we could seek a warrant to go and, and seize the animal. And do that with the warrant through the justice court. So that's a benefit as well. We still could do that. We're doing it through the A L J, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to ask A L J. We'd have to go. And ask the justice court judge for the warrant to do that. So it would kind of make sense to have it. If he's gonna be issued a warrant on it, it makes sense. To have it before him as well. Um, and our justice court did hear these cases prior to two thousand seventeen. Uh, yeah, so we have an early, late the history where Judge Coons would. Hear these issues and hear these cases and will on it, um, our animal patrol officer did those places before Judge Coons previously and. Uh, there were no concerns or issues with how those cases were handled before Judge Coons. They were efficient and it worked well. So they have no concerns with it going to the justice court. Um. Some of the possible downsides of having it to the justice court is that if the case was. We would have, we would have to be careful on how, on how we set up going to the justice court. If, if it was part of. Just one case where the case was. Also the criminal case of the owner, there is a possibility if, if those cases were handled as one case. There could be a, you know, a right to an attorney that would be, could be a point if they're in the judge. Uh, which may an extra cost if they're litigating that issue of, you know, the, of the animal, whether or not it's. Dangerous and vicious and whether or not it needs to be destroyed, that it had extra hearings or possibly an attorney could be there representing. The, you know, the defendant on the city's dime for that hearing if it was part of one case. If we. Did that procedure where we made it where it was two separate cases and the adjudication of the animal wasn't part of the criminal case against the owner. Um, then the right to have an attorney appointed or the right to jury trial would not. Would not bide over if they were two separate cases. And if one case was just determining the adjudication of the dangerous animal, then. And that's the way it was previously. Previously, when Judge Coons handled those cases, he was not, um. He was not having jury trials on the issue of destruction of the animal. And so that's something that would need to be looked at if we did take it to, to Judge Coons. It was part of the, um, criminal case. Jury trials will often times take six months to a year, even in our justice court. And that would mean we're holding an animal in this city kennel for six months to a year, uh. Our animal control officer, Mr. Ector, has stated that that's not healthy for the animals. They can go kennel crazy. And they're that way on, especially if the animal was deemed not to be dangerous and vicious and was released back to the owner. And, you know, it took six months for that to happen. It could finish you, it costs money to hold them in the, in the kennel. You know, there, there'd be some issues if. The process was taking that long. And so. Those are kind of the concerns you're doing for the justice court that we have to look at. Um, our options on this, we could keep this process the same, keep it before the A L J. Right now, we don't have, um. There's not any type of threat that's really by the animal control or by the prosecutor, prosecutors. Whether we do it before the A L J or whether we do it for the justice court. Really, there's not a preference. It doesn't matter. Um, we believe that the A L J has the power to, to handle those issues. Um, and so we don't have a leap concern with the A L J handling it. Um, except if they showed a warrant, but we could still resolve those with Judge Coons. Um, the other option is, is that we. Two options, you know, or we change the code and allow two options, I could go either A to the A L J or B to the justice court. And that could be at the option of the animal control officer. That's an option. We could send it, the cases over and do them before the justice court. Um, as a separate case of the criminal proceedings, that way we would, uh, alleviate the concerns with the length of. You know, the time it would take to adjudicate the issue if we did them separately. Or we could just have them be part of the criminal proceedings against the owner as well. Then you'd have those other concerns we talked about.
So I'm, my, my two questions are timeline and funding. Is it going to be quicker to get somebody in with the justice court versus the A L J? And is it going to cost us anything different? Cause I know we have to pay for the A L J each time we, we bring them in. Do we have a same cost? I would assume not with the justice court.
Typically, what, what I typically hear is the arguments in favor of the A L J is that it is. More timely and it, it's faster and it costs less. I don't know that the difference is substantial. And I don't know that in our case, the differences would necessarily bear out that way, where we haven't been doing that for several years. It's hard to say exactly how it would play out in our, in our city. The conventional wisdom knows that the A L J is faster and. And less expensive because the process is just less involved.
Okay, thanks.
But, but Councilman McConaughey is right. Councilman McConaughey is right, costs. If we do it before an A L J, we've gotta bring in that contract of A L J and we've gotta pay. If we go to, go to justice court, we're gonna be paying Judge Coons. So there's that fundamental cost. There's fundamental cheaper costs to do it, it through the justice court. Um, the, 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 the other thing, the, here's, here's my, here's my fundamental. And you, you heard this before, at least at Law &amp; Co's, uh. I'd rather have it be done by a judicial officer than a court society judicial officer. One, the judicial officer can issue the warrant if we need to do it. Um, if there's, there's a reason why the, 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 the. I'm gonna say Dan. If, if Dan needs to go out and seize, seize an animal, and I'm saying any animal and not just a dog. If there's a reason why animal control needs to go out and seize it and it's, uh, you know. We go to judge, we get a warrant, it's easy. And the process is, what I, what I wanna do is make sure that the process. The process is consistent. And so we're always going to the judge. And, and by the way, I think there's dual option here. And that's numbers three and four on this. On this, uh, on this slide is that we allow code enforcement, the city prosecutor's office to say. How do you want to proceed? Do we wanna do the bifurcated case? When do we wanna do this in a consolidated case? And let animal control and let the city prosecutor decide which one is going to be the best in the circumstance. If the dog, let's just hypothetically say it's a dog. Um, hypothetically, it's a dog. And for some reason, that dog is at the owner's house. And, um, we're determining if the dangerous animal is part of the, uh. The criminal offense and that the, and it's at the house. We don't care how long that takes, right? Since the owner's got the dog around and. That's okay. And if, and if the dog does something different, well, the charges just get, keep adding on. If the. If it's one of those that we need because the dog's been in the kennel, then the, then animal control and city prosecutor said, let's bifurcate the case. Let's do the hearing to determine if the dog is dangerous and speed that up. My other thought is, is that. I think. And, and we see, we talked about this with some of the issues with code enforcement. Having it in front of the judge. Knowing that you're going to court, not your dog. Add an increase of seriousness to that as opposed to the, and, and I think people will take that more serious. It's just, you know, maybe it's just a perception, but going to court is a lot more formidable than going to an informal. You know, some sort of hearing with an A L J. Yes, um, and my last comment was, this is more about the Salt Lake Tribune test. Um, and if you don't know what the Salt Lake Tribune test is, is it's with a gap plastered on the headlines in the Salt Lake Tribune, do we wanna read the results? And that would be. If it's a judicial determination by. The court of profit and jurisdiction will use the terms that we all love, we all come to know and love. If it's a judicial determination, that's got a lot more air of authority and appropriateness. Knowing that the judge knows, you know, the judge understands probable cause and warrants and seizures and. All of those things may be better than an A L J that focuses on administrative law judge. I think that having a judicial determination, um, particularly when it comes to pets. We know how people love their dogs and their cats, um, and how emotionally tied they get to the. I'm gonna say the, I, I'm gonna preface the next discussion, the, the council meeting. We know how they love their cats, their dogs. And their guts. Um, we know how they love those and people get emotionally attached and they're just like their family. Well, y- you know, we don't go, we don't take kids away. Through C F S, through an administrative law process, the juvenile court judge does that. Um. I would rather see the dogs taken away by a judge than an A L J just for that same reason. We're taking kids away. Um, you know, the proverbial kid, we're ta- and so I'd rather see it done by a judge. And then we steer clear of any potential, you know, you and I. Look, we engaged in the, the case from the tenth circuit that said when police, when, when dogs are killed by the government, it's, it's a seizure. We clear clear of all of that stuff and we go clear afar from any fourth amendment issue. And that's, that's where I wanna be is. No potential for fourth amendment issue and making sure that we've got that, that appropriate air of authority when we're taken. For lack of a better term, a family member away.
I just want to know why we moved from, from the justice court to the A L J. What was the premises? Why, why did we do that?
I can speak to that a little bit. Um, back in the day, yeah. Back in the day, code enforcement fell on the criminal side of things. And nobody was gonna be put in jail because they had weeds that were over twelve inches tall. So the council switched it and made it civil. And at that point, I believe is when we brought in the A L J. And it just moved everything over that direction. Um, I don't recall getting conversations about potentially keeping part of it with the justice court. But I believe it's with, uh, I think Mr. Robinson was a city attorney at that point in time, but that's when we made the switch.
Hey, well, uh, I agree that many people treat their animals like I treat my children. And I think that it might be better held in the judge's court.
I do like the hybrid approach, thinking of the animal. We don't need animals in there for six plus months. And I wanna make sure that, um. The, the code, we can figure out the best possible solution. If it needs to go to H L I, let's do it. If it needs to go to the justice, let's do it. Let's make sure we can cater to that to make the best possible decision.
What would happen if, like I said, if we adopted three and four on the slide, that. They, it, it all goes to the judge, but they can bifurcate the case based on speed. Would you?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Where are you at on this?
Thank you. That was my question too. Why in two thousand seventeen, things changed? That makes sense now that it was criminal and then it was decriminalized. So it was more. Civil. That makes sense to, and. If there isn't a distinct difference in the time or money process, I see what you're meaning. People would take it more seriously. Being in a courtroom as opposed to just having a a hearing. Um, the main concern would be the time and the health and well being of the animal, which coincides with that health and well being of the owner. If it's locked up too long, even if it is deemed innocent, then it could not be. After solitary confinement for so long in a kennel. So whatever would expedite the the process. Um, if it's going to be quicker and it will be taken more seriously, then let's go that route. Thank you. I mean, not the ALJ route.
Does that give you what you need or do you want to go question by question and get a consensus?
I feel comfortable with what's, you know, the feedback we've got.
Yeah, I guess we haven't done our job of making up money for you.
I I guess I'm just struggling as I look at the options and this may be a conversation that Mr. Dog I need to have as to why we would do three. And four, uh, I don't know that. That there's a lot of advantage to be had with having them in the same case, particularly with the jury implications of the indigent defense.
No, I was saying that three or four, that you have the option in the code of doing a bifurcated thing based on. Speed or if the the speed they're going is to combine them. Let's leave that discretion to the city prosecutor. I know that city prosecutors love the term prosecutorial discretion. Let's let's leave the discretion on the appropriate pathway to the judge. To the city prosecutor and animal control, but just shift it to the judge. And do either one of those based on what the best determination by animal control and the city prosecutor is. Does that make sense? That was my suggestion.
I can animal control figure it out.
I don't think there'd be a problem doing that. I do, and we can we can ask Mr. Edgell his opinion. I know, but speaking with the prosecution on this issue over the past little while. I do believe that the third option would be the one they chose every single time. So if we if we. Put most of those options in the code, I do think the third option would be the choice every time. So it might be. Superfluous to have the fourth option in there.
That's the question that I'm having in my mind. But even if it was superfluous, if there were a case that were appropriate, that would authorize them to do that. And and so it it wouldn't hurt anything, even if that option was the the one that was used the most, right?
There's an invitation, sort of a quasi invitation for Mr. Edgell to share his thoughts and then we got into legal thoughts. But I I'd love to hear, I'd love to hear from uh Mr. Edgell.
Yes, since General is speaking from my own experience, the majority of my career here was under the judicial system and it worked fine. It worked well and it has continued to work fine under the ALJ process. So we are fine with the four process as well from the proceed without. We really don't have a strong opinion one way or another.
Thank you. The only other thought that I had is this is a little bit different from the rest of code enforcement. Because this, I think, has more of a public safety implication. So, uh, I I would definitely like to see us go with bullet number three. I would be opposed to adding an option for path for bullet number four, but I definitely like to see number three. I think that's helpful for us and I think gives us what it is that we need. So thank you.
So one last comment is we're working on that. We get a little bit farther down the path. Please include at least, since we were the first and the second, please include me and. Council member White Lock on the discussions as we can collaborate, make sure we get down the road where we need to be certain. Yeah.
Just, uh, may I ask a clarifying question? Are there four of you that want to do number three? Is that what we heard?
Yeah, what I understood is that we would be including. There would be options that are available. And the attorney's office has that, so not actual work for the council office. Yeah.
We'll we'll just include that as we prepare the red lines and then we'll have red lines that can come back so the council can review and make sure that is consistent with what you want. When that vote actually comes.
Thanks for your help on this discussion.
Yeah, that brings us to the next item, which is ownership and maintenance of fowl.
Can I take council discussion? Can I just take this one since I've got the longest history with the.
Of course.
This was this was actually suggested by council member Pat because he had some people that, uh. Was it was it your dad or was it Brock that was really mean about the duck? Um, but David David had a a neighbor that had some ducks and they had to get rid of the duck. Because the ducks aren't um allowed by um ordinance. Do you have any other slide, Alan? Okay, so what what we I did the research and if you look at the RCA, what we want to know is. Um, will council be willing to expand the definition of. The birds that are permitted. Right now in the city code, um, it only it only allowed to have pigeons. And chickens. People can't have crails, doves, um, duck. Um, any of those other things. So the question is, would you would would the council be willing? Council be willing to change the ordinance to allow. broader a array of birds. And um allow the and then instead of saying. Well, this, these are the birds we allow. We actually just say which birds are prohibited. Salt Lake County, and if you sign verse nine, Salt Lake County does that. They prohibit, um. Geese. Alan, help me out with the with the list, with the list that I'll say prohibit geese, turkeys, peafowl and one of them. Uh, I don't even know what a peafowl is. I I. Um, but they but they prohibit the geese probably because of the, oh, and roosters. Those were the ones that they. That's the ones they prohibit. They they, the Salt Lake County and their ordinance prohibits. Um, the the geese, the turkeys, um, the peafowl and roosters. Well, we already prohibit roosters. And so the question is, do we want to, do we want to expand the definition of what birds people can have? Um, in the research, I actually, it's funny, when I did the research, Denver. Have an ordinance called food producing animal. And I'm not going to go down the road what a food producing animal is with their definition of. But they they do a lot of duck because ducks are in the same or the same realm as chicken as a food producing animal because they produce eggs. So, um, that's the question for the council. And then there's one other then, and then the second question, I'll just throw that out, then we have the discussion. The second question is, we as we would look, as I was looking at this, the ordinance. We have places in our code in multiple spots about what animals are permitted. In Title thirteen, it tells you what animals are permitted in a rural residential area. But Title six tells you that's permitted in residential areas with chickens and pins. And so what council want to look is while we're playing with this ordinance, also pull all the bird. All the animal, let me rephrase that, all the animal stuff out of Title thirteen. And put it in the title six, so it's easier for animal control to figure out. So you're not flipping through. Ten sections, ten titles of the code to figure out what the heck we're doing. So those are the two questions for the council tonight. Do you want it? What do you want to expand the definition of birds and which way do you want to do it? Do you want to say which birds are permitted or allow all birds and then ban the ones that we don't? And then do you want the the code to be consolidated to put all the animal ordinances in Title six? And then I'll shed, now I'll shed.
Well, you know, I'm in favor, um, as a chicken owner for many, many, many years. I helped construct the Taylor's Little Code years ago. Um, I'm backed. I think most chicken owners are actually, um, in violation of the code as we have written now. Just because little nuances, like chicks will eventually turn into hens before. And then you have ten chickens. I mean, most of us in the little chicken world had at least ten chickens because that's just how it happened. Or I had to put my chicken poop on my patio because my backyard was sinking. I had no other choice. So it was against code, like little things like that. Um, but how many of us want ducks? A lot of us. We also want to add ducks and turkeys to our block. And if that becomes the code, that's, uh, people are going to be very, very happy. Cause I know some people who have it anyways. Um, so yeah, I would like to see consistent with what, um, backyard chicken and backyard foul is already happening in the direction it's going to, especially with self sufficiency.
Yeah, I definitely want to have code easier to read, not just for staff, but for residents if they have to go to five different places. After they've done the first three, they're done. So, you know, you know. Uh, but I would like to hear from Mr. Edgell. I'm happy to go with, I think it makes sense to go with the listing what isn't allowed, but I don't really know. You know, like why why would the turkey that chosen in their code to not be allowed? Why would you allow one of that? And I don't know enough about fowl to know why you should have them. I also know that in some communities, there's a lot of quail and there might be peacocks and. But maybe nobody really owns them. So I don't know.
But yeah, we could certainly be supportive of, um, can, uh, putting the, uh, fowl information all in all ordinance. Um, we do get a lot of questions from residents to want to to ask, show me where I can't have this or where I can't have this. And it's very clear on other domesticated types of animals, but it hasn't been clear on the on the fowl. So I agree, any any efforts we can make in that regard would be helpful.
So what birds would, if if we were to do birds, what birds would you say we shouldn't allow besides geese?
Um. Two that rise to the top of the list, um, sorry, council member Blum, but turkeys. Uh, and and the peafowl, which are the peacocks and and the peahens. Um, the reason being is we do have people. For example, who get turkeys a lot just before Thanksgiving, but we come to find out because they get loose very quickly. They put them in their yard because they're going to have them for Thanksgiving. Um, they escape and they are extremely hard to to capture. And the the, you know, person who have them is not able to capture them. Uh, neighbors are complaining about it. It takes resources from animal services. They're they're very difficult. And the same thing for the for the peafowl. Um, they're very noy- they're noisy, um, and they're very, very difficult to catch. They're excellent flyers. And it just just causes a burden on the city to start allowing those. It's very hard to keep them in a yard.
So if we went with the list that Salt Lake County uses, we've we've already banned the roosters.
Right, yeah.
They banned the peafowls, the geese and the turkeys. Along with that, would you be okay with that?
Yes, yeah, yeah, as long as the restrictions are in place to make sure they're on a non nuisance basis.
And they have to be, and and obviously we'd have to modify the ordinance to talk about pens. Instead of just chicken coops, but I think that's an easy fix.
Right. And then the numbers would be key on that as well to make sure they're non nuisance. That's where the majority of our complaints come from is the number of animals.
But what what do you say is the upper end for non nuisance?
Well, in checking with lo- other local jurisdictions, um, that seem to have codes that work well. And that, um, they don't seem to deal with a lot of complaints from, is just pull it up to double check. I know West Valley allows, for example, like ducks as as part of pets. They can only have four total. So if you have no other animals, it'd be a total of four. I talked to their director and I asked, how often do you get complaints about ducks? And she said, almost never.
Yeah, ducks, and you don't want more than that anyway. So.
No.
Most owners don't want more than four ducks. They poop everywhere.
More smells associated with them compared to the other birds. So probably more in the neighborhood of two or something, um, more restrictive. Um, it's anything Sandy allows in this pets as well, um, on the ducks. Um, but I mean, we allow five chickens, uh, right now. So one thought is to allow a maximum of five birds, whatever they may be. Uh, to be within that realm on a non nuisance basis. I'm flat certain not the, I mean, it maybe it may differ depending on the on the type of bird, but. It's sometimes you have people at a combination of the chickens and other and other birds like you.
Yeah, or they have the, um, the small version of them, of the chickens, so the the tiny ones. Um, and so they have more of those because they're so small.
Mm hmm, right.
That's my repack that I'll turn. Right, thank you. And that brings up the other point is the number. So it's not just trying to figure out which animal, but how many of this animal equates, how much of that? And if you have some of this and some of that, you can have two of this and one of that. I remember serving on planning commission and boy, did we have, uh. Fun trying to figure out how in. How much muck a pig needs versus this other animal I was calling agriculturalist at Utah State University. And I was visiting the Bowler Farm and doing lots of background research, just trying to figure out the numbers. So it's not just trying to figure out the the animal, but it's the the numbers. As you mentioned, you know, four ducks could be worth. One hen and I don't know, partridge in a pear tree, something. So that that's where it not just arbitrarily saying, well, yeah, we want this and we think that it would be nice to. Be operating on empirical data and not just assuming that we know that. This many of that animal is going to be fine. But but yes, this was precipitated by a constituent. Uh, who was in tears because their family member, their duck, uh, was no longer permitted. Which goes into the other conversation we just had because a neighbor evidently reported them and being non compliance. And so I mean, code enforcement does have to come out. And so now there's a big brouhaha going in the community there, you know, so so the code enforcement reporting process could, uh. Be a little less George Orwellian and and not having Big Brother looking. Looking out, although I I did note that in conversation with the mayor and Mr. Lee, of course, it's nice to incentivize people to communicate together. You just don't want to pit them against each other. So that's what precipitated that. Um, and recognizing also that other people probably have fowl that aren't fowl. But are their feathered friends and their family members.
Thank you. Yeah, like does, does probably not much of a problem, but people, some people own does. Or some people raise does for weddings and those kind of things. And so, uh, you know, we. Maybe we draft the ordinance or we leave the number blank and then as part of the the next work session. We we can get with you and we can work on maybe some of the numbers.
True, that'd be great.
So my thoughts on this one, I'd be okay with this changing the definition, um, to to include ducks. I'm a little bit hesitant to open it up because everything right now is restrictive with the code and we expressly say what you can have and what you can do. So it'd be a little bit different approach and I'm not sure if. I I'm not, I don't know what I don't know. So I don't necessarily want to open it up to something unintentionally and then have to try and backtrack. But if we have decades of experience where nothing's been a problem, I also don't want to legislate. Just for the sake of having legislation, just in case, I'd rather err on the side of personal freedom and liberty and hoping people choose the right thing. Um, and are thoughtful of their neighbors and the animals that they pick. Um, I'm not ready to go much beyond. Opening the definition, um, to include foul because as council member Pack mentioned, I'm still scarred from those conversations we had about. How many animals you can have, how many points are each animal worth, how many total points based on the square footage of the of the yard and what zoning, what the zoning is. So I think by changing the definition, we can still accomplish what's needed. I'd rather not like rehash all the points and all the values. However, so I I I think.
I don't want to go there at all.
Yeah, okay. I I thought I heard something about changing the numbers and and that one worried me.
Well, if you had, if you had five chickens, are you allowed to have a duck? Uh, or, you know, what's what's the combination number? If you have, if you have a couple of quail. That that's what I'm talking about, the numbers. And the combination is what I'd like to see because I don't want to. To say, okay, you can have five chickens now, plus you can have a number of pigeons. And now on top of that, you can add a half dozen ducks. Like, no, it's just you can have foul and total number. And by the way, this is included in that definition of foul. So you can do three chickens, two ducks. I would. Think we just treat them the same. Yeah, I I I think you're on the, so I think you're on the same sheet of music that that me and council member Pack were.
Yeah, and then the other part as far as moving, uh, where it's located in code. I I don't know the different chapters off the top of my head, but I want to make sure that there's a good connection between land use and it doesn't throw off anything. That's being done on the land use side. Just make sure everything's nice and clean. I do. Want to see things consolidated though, so they don't have to look in multiple places. So wherever it makes the most sense, there's. So wherever it makes the most sense, if there's something here, so look over there, something there, so look over here. Rather than, hey, we have part here, part there, then maybe a third part you're not you're not aware of, go look at all of code and see if you can find something. I I'd very much like to see it centralized wherever that happens to be. However, in the interest of time. And getting this accomplished, especially as mentioned for for the family, um maybe dealing with that in two separate pieces. Update the definition, I think, would be relatively quick and easy. And then if we have to shift code, if it's not as quick and easy, if it takes a longer amount of time. I would suggest hack that that separate.
I don't think that would be difficult. Fix Title Six first and then then take the next step to to consolidate Title Six. With but consolidate all the animal code into Title Six. I would certainly approach or favor that approach. Be smaller project in two different bites and the council can help with that one. So yeah, I would I would agree that that may be the better approach.
Um this is for the council and speaking of freedom and liberty, can we somehow make it so H O S cannot over supersede this at all? Is there any way we can do that?
Yeah, con- convince your convince your hundred something people up on the hill to change the law.
Dang it, okay.
Uh any idea when you would be able to get both sections back?
Both sections meaning?
Well, one would be adding more foul to our code and the other would be combining all the animals to one section.
Yeah, I think the first part we can do very, very quickly. The second part, we just wanna be careful to make sure that we're considering kinda all of the pieces. It's a little harder for me to put an estimate of the time of it, but I haven't started really been looking at it. Um the first piece we can, we can turn it on very quickly, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Great, just just to clarify, I I appreciate that conversation. Because the resident question thought that she was in compliance via the purchasing the duck. She checked city code and didn't see that a duck was uh banned. And it because of course they are already approved in certain areas of the city. Um and then we have these different places in code with conflicting information. So in good faith, she went ahead and bought the duck, so thank you.
All right, is there anything else needed from the council on this one? I see Mr. Anderson, you'll run point on this since it's council.
Alan, I'll work with you a little bit. Maybe I can help with a draft that helps the city attorney's office. Um at least some of the basics and then we can turn it over to you and it'll be an easier project.
That's fine, yeah. All right, next item is going to be discussion of executive branch committees. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, council. We just wanna bring to you some possible amendments or get your feedback. We don't have code in this. Uh proposed code, I wanna get your feedback before we spend staff time creating code. Uh the executive branch committees are found in Title Two, um and I've outlined that. Do you wanna go to the next slide or? So we consolidated Title Two about a year ago and we're gonna help, I don't know, organize fashion. So the general committee provisions are found in Chapter One, Planning Commission and Two. Board of Adjustment Three and the others, as you can see, as they're laid out, there's just six chap- chapters in Title Two. We're gonna focus on two of those. We're gonna focus on Title One or sorry, Title Two, Chapter One and Chapter Five specifically. I'm not planning anything or not proposing anything to the council for planning commissioner board of adjustments uh or the items in Chapter Four. Next slide, so in two and two right now, um all. Executive branch committees are appointed by the mayor and come to advice and consent by the council, which has been a field practice. That's in uh code two dash one dash two. They can have two, three year terms in two and four. Um they can go to an additional term and there's some provisions for that, that additional term. So if a if an individual uh comes in for a third term. Um that is subject to advice and consent of the council. So if they're going to do their second term, that can be just done by the mayor through appointment. Reappointment, a third term reappointment needs to have advice and consent of the council. Committee members in the code says are generally residents. Non residents may be appointed by the mayor for special expertise, unique needs or supporting the organization. That's in two one six. One of the confusing things in the code is it does align residents with voting rights and non residents with non voting rights. They're used kind of interchangeably and that's in two one six. Uh we have a section, you know, I know you'll appreciate these photos. Um a max of fifteen voting members on a committee, so not more than uh fifteen members, but only fifteen voting members. I E fifteen residents. That's in two one two. Uh they need to elect a chair and vice chair in January, much like city council. That's in two one eight. Um quorum is a simple majority of the appointed voting members, that's seven. Uh there are some attendance requirements and training by the city administrator is done annually. That's the bulk of the provisions in Title One. The other question, uh there's the item that talks about three year terms. I'm sorry, this is the statutory. This is the ones we're not talking about. It's two, three year terms and have advice of the city council. They must be a resident for these two committees. And they do, they can serve additional terms with the advice and consent of the council, so we're not gonna talk about those. Now the standing committees, the standing committees are the mayor's committees, board of, or it is like healthy West Jordan. Western Stampede Diversity Committee, uh Parks and Open Land, Open Space. Um those committees, there's a question that has been asked if you want the committees to be codified. Or I think it's the next slide, there's all the committees, go past that one. One more. Reporting advisory, so the discussion we wanna have is, does the council want to? Make it simpler. For example, the outcomes of this is more engagement of residents. A thorough or through a simpler and accessible process and additional service opportunities to the committee and community. And being a little dynamic. So for example, instead of codifying the committees in Title Five. Do we delete those and allow committee creation and dissolution by the mayor by executive order and the council by resolution? Is there a purpose of having voting and non voting members of the committee? Is there a purpose for resident and non resident? For example, current code, there's a provision for expertise, organization, needs of the committee. Um for having a non resident participate, there's a couple that are on the airport advisory committee, other than non residents. And also, if there's a West Jordan license business, which we do get. Uh the city does receive applications from employees who work in West Jordan businesses but do not live in the city. And the business desires them to have their employees be able to participate, for example, in Healthy West Jordan is one that I'm aware of. Uh how does the council feel about that? And then um uh one of the issues that continually comes up to the council office. Is the council advice and consent for resident volunteers when it's sometimes difficult to say no to a volunteer. Would there be a desire to provide a report to the council of committee members annually or semi annually? Or do you wanna continue the advice and consent or transition to an annual volunteer appreciation event? What we've done is we've got, I think, five questions that we've put into Slido. Um you should have a text. That will get you into Slido on your phone. Well, I can get you one. I can pass you a QR, but if that would be easier. So I'm not gonna show the QR on the screen. That's that's correct. S L I D O dot com. So we have about, like I said, five questions um that will help guide us. And then the plan would be based on this input from you that we would rewrite the code and bring it back to a committee of the whole. Make sure you you review it, uh it's what you desire and then bring it back for adoption.
It'll ask for your name, but it won't show the re- your name on the results. That's just in the event that we need to follow up with you on any of these questions. There will be a yes and no and an unsure. And if you mark unsure and we need some clarity on it, we'll follow up with you on that point.
And in talking with Mr. Campos, who is the community outreach coordinator, the average number of committee members on the committee is between five and seven. Western Stampede has more, um so there's still some capacity to grow. Is everyone in? The, okay, I'm I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be terrible right here, but I'm looking at the first one. And it says, should council delete the codification, serve committees and allow alternatives? But then it says allow to create by executive order or by council resolution. Well, what am I picking? Sorry, what am I picking? Thank you.
No good point.
Let let's. Well, but the idea, the idea of this, the idea of this discussion, and I'm yeah, I'm just gonna jump in here as we're we're taking this. This Slido thing. The idea of this discussion is just council. I I'm gonna take that helicopter at the aviation facility again and I'm gonna fly up. Seven hundred and fifty feet above ground level. Does the council need to be involved in these committees or do we allow the mayor to run them? Their executive committees, they're supposed to provide, they're supposed to provide uh advice to the ma- that they're, they provide advice to the mayor. So my question is, why are we even involved in them? And that's where I would rather go is just eliminate that whole standing committee section. I'd just assume get rid of it. So that's.
Uh well, maybe it is. Oh, and and my question on here is, is we're having all these conversations about the mayor's committees. I'd kinda like to hear from the mayor. Um docs and what they'd like. Uh they will be in the mayor's office.
I I love the idea of have flexibility to create committees as it arises. And dissolve committees as the need goes away and do it just according to that. And I think it'd be great if the council had the same opportunities. They may have some committees that they want to do a copy something with. Maybe to research or get information for them and let the council be able to have that flexibility to create and solve committees as they see the need fit. And I think the code already allows us to do that. Council doesn't allow you to do that. That is correct. And then once I we do that, I like committees have the flexibility to set their own schedules of their beings. Instead of having rigid schedule to set according to where their needs are. And Western Stampede is a good one. They they take a few months off and they have. A bunch of meetings when it gets clustered together instead of having to have a monthly meeting. Well, and and I think if I remember some of the code, um that that Alan did, Alan pick big parts. But there's some other parts in the code that require them to keep minutes and the minute and supposed to have notices and. Yeah, some of it's open meetings and all this stuff. And that wasn't ever the original intent of this. And I think those the those those ordinances are just so onerous to do this right. Let the, let's, let's just let you run the committees and put the people that you need on there and let you get the input you need. We stay out of it. And if we need to, we've got the general plan committee, the statutory, like you've got the board of adjustment and the planning committee. Uh the planning commission. And if we need a, if we need an ad hoc committee, we can create it. Just like you, just like you create the committee, we can do that. And I I would just as soon do that and get out of your business is my opinion.
Same. Um the only thing I doubt is I do like having the opportunity as a council, like with the council and the mayor to recognize those who are volunteering and those who are serving. Um and I think we can do that without having the committees qualified. But I like the idea of making sure that they have a chance to be recognized, um something with the city logo, their name on it. Thanking them for their service and all of our signatures. Um and and being able to shake their hand and say, thank you. That's that's all I really want, whether or not. Um they serve like are limited to three years. I mean, I think some of the limitations that are out there. Were copied and carried over from planning commission where it doesn't make sense, where we struggle to staff some of the committees, like Healthy West Jordan. If somebody wants to serve on Healthy West Jordan for twenty years, I would love to recognize them for twenty years of service on that committee. Uh rather than say, sorry, you did two, three year terms, you've gotta take a year off before you can come back again.
As I was, as I was preparing this, that's a really good point you brought up. As I was preparing this, I did talk with Mr. Lee and he indicated that uh. Most of the time, once they've served six years, they are not brought back and yet they're still willing to serve. So it's kind of an artificial thing and that's why the committee membership stays between five and seven, is there's this constant turnover. Um but that was Mr. Lee's comment when I visited with him.
It's worth noting that we did ask the mayor to participate, so we'll we'll be able to gather his feedback as we're going through this, these results as well. So wait till there's a little six up there on the, wait for results on.
We're not gonna get six.
Okay. Well, which is, this is general direction, so you can. Yes, so say we make the mayor, sorry, that was me, that was the point, okay, cool.
Okay, this uh this.
Are we gonna show results?
All locked.
So if we eliminate, so here's here's my thought, is if we eliminate all of these standing committees. Then we don't need to worry about the max members. We eliminated the standing committees. We let the mayor do what he wants to do.
The 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 max committees is in a different section of the code, so if you're deleting five, we need to still discuss if you wanna have a max. For example, the code says all committees shall have a maximum of sixteen members. Western Stampede exceeds that.
But if we, follow me through here. If the fundamental idea is that we remove the standing committees or let the mayor manage the committees. We need to remove this section from code so that the mayor can manage the committee.
Okay.
Do we have four on that? Are we not doing, yeah, let's let's.
On Slido, so I got a record, I got four. I I guess, and we might be able to do this a little quicker, going back to those earlier questions that you had up. To see if anybody has any strong feelings about any of those specifically as they regard, as they relate to the mayor's committees, cuz if they don't, then we can.
Okay.
Yeah, go back to the, we'll have a question slide. There we go. Does anybody have any strong burning uh opinion on any of these? Items as they relate to the mayor's committees, not the planning commission.
My strong opinion is eliminate them all from the code with the mayor manager.
I'm in favor of that.
Council member back.
Thank you. I I think an annual report would probably be better than semi annual, since we have enough reports. I I've spoken to a couple of people about C, bullet point B. What about a West Jordan licensed business who desires to have their employees be able to participate? They're not necessarily West Jordan residents, but they wanna make a contributory factor. You know, have some team morale and camaraderie, so I think that that should be allowed. Now, whether or not they should be voting on what's going on in West Jordan, you know, that's a different de- discussion.
But if the idea of the committee is to provide advice to the mayor, doesn't, the the if the mayor says, I wanna take a poll of hands. He can do whatever he wants inside the committee and the vote. We're not recording votes and nobody records votes for. And and so that that's just nonsense anyway. The only thing that I am, that I would actually. Uh feel strongly about here is the second bullet point on D. Is that I think that what we need to do is dump all the advice consent and all that nonsense. And we go to an annual volunteer appreciation event. Salt Lake County does an annual volunteer event. We've seen Harriman do an annual volunteer event that that's, and and if the mayor, like like council member McConaughey said. We wanna recognize a a person, the mayor has the opportunity during council reports. To say, I'm appointing uh Mary Smith to this council to to. Here's, here's a certi- we have, we have a certificate that even we can all sign before the the meeting. We recognize, we wanna take pincer with her and we move on and we don't have to do advice. So we can rec- mayor can decide how to recognize, but I think that the ultimate is do an annual volunteer appreciation event. Whatever the mayor wants to do when he appoints him.
And the council actually did that with the general plan committee members. You held an appreciation event for them.
Uh I I do wanna.
Uh, I, I do wanna get rid of the continued advice and consent, I think it's hokey, I don't see the point of it. Especially if we're having these go into the mayor's. Hands, and let the mayor's office run them, I don't need to give him advice and consent on someone like. Who amongst us is gonna say, oh no, no mayor, we're not gonna say yes to that guy, we've seen him before, no one's gonna do that.
You would, you would.
If there's any issue, we'll go behind the scene and talk to the mayor about it, we're not gonna sit up here and. So, that's my, where I stand on it, I'm okay with the other things.
And with that advice and consent, because it's primarily ceremonial, I would be fine just handing that over, I worry that. Uh, some folks might think, oh, well, you supported and you endorsed this person. When you gave advice and consent for a particular role and not doing background checks on folks, uh, if they end up. Off and left field, causing problems, I, I don't necessarily want that advice and consent to be misconstrued as an endorsement. Um, I, yeah.
Thank you, and I don't disagree with that, while also I see. The benefit of having a check and a balance and just having transparency, especially being the chair of the, the mayoral appointment subcommittee. That way at least comes before us and we know what's going on, there's just a little bit more communication, I'm not saying that we need to. Necessarily approve, but, but it would just be nice to have these reports to know who's doing what, who's serving. Because we ran into the situation many times where we said, well, how many people have been interviewed for this position and how has it been advertised? Uh, now that it's a one-person appointment in our new form of government, that's not so new anymore, versus the panel interview. And, and of course, that's more for a planning commission and that, that, that we've talked about that higher level, but, but at the same time, it would be nice to see. How's this being advertised, how's it being vetted, unless we have that conversation here, we just never have it. So trust, verify, you know, I, of course, trust mayor Burton to, to do that, but that mean, doesn't mean that down the road, there might not be. A widening gap of division of, well, it's only given the city council as much information as they need to have.
So, I, I, let me, let me just jump in here. We have, I, I'm gonna pick on, on, on the largest committee, the Western Stampede. How many of those people have we actually really provided advice and consent for? Two, I mean. We, we, you've got, I, I, I've got a single out of family, you got the Bowler family. Um, that, that, that volunteers that runs all the gates and the mutton busting and all of that other stuff, we don't pick, the. They're, they're as much part of Western Stampede as, as, uh, you know, as anybody. We, we, we don't need to do advice and consent for the, 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 the committees. That we want people, the ultimate goal here, and I, and this is, this is, this is my philosophy. Is the ultimate goal here is we want people to volunteer in the city. We don't need to have gates and, 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 and be gatekeepers to decide which per, if. If we, if we're gonna establish a sister city committee ever again, if that, or whatever, the mayor wants to keep that great, if not, I don't care. But we're carrying things in the, in the code, and if somebody wants to volunteer to have a, to, to have something. Let's let them volunteer, uh, you know, they've got talents and stuff and I don't wanna be in the way and. Let's, it just, we just get rid of that completely and we get rid of all the standing things and, and what we focus in. Is our statutory ability to do, um, advice and consent, which is the planning commission. The board of adjustment and the department heads and the statutory employees that are required by statute, the. The, the Nate Nelsons and Josh Chandler's of the world, where that say city engineer and city attorney and city recorder. Had, I think those are statutory, we have to do, right? And then, then, and we've adopted the department head, let's focus on those, by the way, Josh. One of the things that we may wanna do is we're working on the title sixteen rewrite, just to think about this, is. Reach out to Scott Langford, he was, he was talking about the possibility of eliminating the board of adjustment. He may wanna talk to the mayor to the right too, he was talking about eliminating the board of adjustment and going to an ALJ process like Salt Lake City. So, that may be something we wanna consider as we're working on that, but that was just an aside.
Okay, yeah, it's definitely something I've, I know other cities have been working towards, so I'd be happy to have that conversation.
So, my thought for similar to council member Greens, um. That I don't think there's necessarily a check and balance needed for, for these types of committees. And from my perspective, the purpose of these committees is to give residents a connection and a way to be involved with the city. And to access some of the resources of the city, if somebody wants to be able to help impact where things are going with, uh. Well, we've got the sustainability committee, if they wanna talk budget or water use or something like that, we have the Western Stampede, we have the events, we have parks, we have. Lot of different places for them to be involved, so, um, these are groups that are offering their thoughts to the mayor as the budget's being prepared. And I don't necessarily think that we need, uh, need, need to have too much of a check on that, I do however. I want to see something for D, and I don't know if it needs to be codified, but I would like to see, um. In addition to a, to a regular report to the council as to what the committees are working on. I'd like to see a current updated list of the existing functioning committees on the city's website. With a list of those who are currently serving, uh, along with an explanation of what that committee does. We used to have that back in the day, where I had like the name of the person, when they started, uh, when their current term was set to expire. Um, and that was, I, I know for me it worked well, um, vetting some folks, trying to see how long had they actually been associated with the city, how well did they actually know something? If somebody's using volunteer service on a resume or something, it's, it's nice to have that, but. Um, if the council wants to reach out to somebody because we're working on an update for the Parks Master Plan, well. Who are those folks that we might wanna reach out to, it makes it a little easier for us to find them, so I would love to see an update, or not an updated, but a current listing on the web. Of who those folks are that are serving, aside from that, um.
I could live with that.
No, thank you, I don't know that that need to be codified, but I'd be happy to codify that, that's probably the only thing I'd consider codification for.
Well, I appreciate the direction and the process that I wanna use is to draft the code changes, bring it back to a committee of the whole so that you can review the changes. Make sure it's what you have agreed to or, yeah, what you've stated, um, and then we'll adopt it just as a. Public hearing.
Thank you.
Awesome, okay, that brings us to administrative items, there's one item that I wanted to bring up. Council member Jacob noted that there, there's a discrepancy between our code for. Um, water efficiency and landscaping versus what Jordan Valley Water Conservancy is requiring. Um, my question to the council, this is why it's an administrative item. Do we want to direct staff to make the required change, send it to the planning commission then over to us? Or do we want to have a work session to discuss this? Noting that that work session, the soonest it would likely happen would be January, and this does impact residents' ability to gain rebates. It'd be done faster if we just have them say, go for it, but we don't get a way in.
My, my thought would be, let's take the language out of the Utah administrative code that we left out. That they said we were comply- uncompliant with. And put it in the ordinance and get this done fast so that our residents don't get hurt, that would be my.
Stop to go by planning commission and public hearing and then.
Right, but, but it, we, we wouldn't have to wait to do something to send it back, we could just. If, if they just make that modification ba- based on administrative rule. And they, would they restart the process that they could hear the public hearing by. Um, December sometime, and we could pass it first part of January, make this quick so it doesn't screw our water rates or. Negotiated water rates and our incentive program go away.
Uh, as I've talked to staff, thank you, as I've talked to staff, um, there is a, because it is a land use, it's a two-week public hearing. So we would be, uh, on an accelerated schedule, we would be looking at December fifth for the planning commission. Um, and then we would need, the, the earliest we would be able to bring it back to you would be December twentieth.
Game on, if we can do that fast, game on.
It will, we'll do our very best, I just wanna make sure that we're thorough, I don't wanna have any, any.
Oh, absolutely.
So, thank you.
Okay. With that, we also have a closed meeting tonight.
So I am going to move to temporarily recess this meeting. To convene in a closed session to, uh, discuss the appropriate issues. As provided by Utah Organizing Fifty-two dash four dash two oh five.
And if I can add a bit of clarification on, on your motion under OMA, uh, there's only five of you. OMA only requires a two-thirds of those present, so four of you would need to be in the affirmative to go to close.
We have motion by council member Green, second by council member Whitlock, this requires a roll call vote, um. So, Cindy.
I'm just gonna go in order, Chair McConaughey.
I.
Vice Chair Bloom?
Yes.
Council member Green?
Yes.
Council member Pack?
Yes.
Council member Whitlock?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion passes, five to zero.
Alright, and. Is it gonna be, how, how are you gonna be doing the recording, is it gonna be? So I assume, I see that we're still recording on the Zoom, we'll need to, is it still broadcasting the Zoom? So for those who are watching at home, we're going to pause the Zoom momentarily.